There's always a reminder that this meeting will be recorded and may be broadcasted or rebroadcasted on Westford Cat. So always we'll start with open forum.
Just if anybody is here for 470 Grand Road, the applicant did request to continue that matter to the April 18th meeting.
What's up?
Just we have Regional Planning Agency, NIMCOG, our executive director Jenny Ray, she's here to talk about some items later on in the UJ.
Anybody on the board, anything for open forum?
The only thing I want to add is I was at the last week's NIMCOG meeting and it was really interesting to hear that NIMCOG is also working with National Grid to try to work this whole problem. So that was a point that was very interesting to everybody.
All right, anybody in the audience, open forum? All right, moving right along to our first public hearing item PB 2505, 37 Powers Road. Good evening Attorney Robbins.
Good evening Mr. Chair, good evening the members of the board. For the record Attorney Melissa Robbins from Frau &amp; Robbins. Also with me tonight is the applicant Nick Roman. We also have members of the applicant team Brian Gudrow, Dan LaCivita here for Jeff Dirk today for the traffic, Nick Griffin, and Ian Rami. I think the board is aware, at the last meeting we discussed the five-story option. But before the applicant proceeded with the full technical review and responding to other comments, the board wanted to know what mitigation could be offered to support the development. Before I run through that, it's already up on the screen, I just wanted to point out to the board that I think there's been a lot of discussion about perhaps the four-story structure being a cost savings to the developer and we should have to mitigate that. But I just want to make it clear that the five-story option is actually more costly. The construction cost for the actual construction of the building itself is more costly and obviously the landscaping is more costly because there's a lot more area that we're taking to its natural condition which it is in today and bringing it back to grass or the landscape. Just for a specific example, if you look at the front of the development along Powers Road, to go to the five-story option, you know there's a lot more area along Powers Road that's going to go back to natural. It's about three quarters of an acre, 32,000 square feet. So if you put that at $15 per square foot for landscaping, you're talking $480,000 in just that area alone that costs more for a five-story structure. So I'm not going to go through all of it in painstaking, I just use that as an example of the cost for the five-story versus the four-story. And then I'll go through the mitigation. And Mr. Chair, what I think I'll do is run through them all and then answer any questions the board may have at the end, if that's okay? Okay. So number one, I think this one is pretty self-explanatory. This will directly address the board comments and some of the butter comments, which is a crossing across Powers Road. This will be at the project entrance, or some location right there at the project's frontage. This is obviously, we talked this, I go ad nauseam at the last meeting, subject to DOT's approval. But if DOT for some reason doesn't approve a crossing here, we would agree to gift to the town the cost of the construction of the crossing, which would be $50,000. We're hoping they do approve it, but if not, we have an alternative here to proceed. The signal timing review, I would put the second and third in traffic monitoring. I know that the board has talked a lot about traffic monitoring, but I think there's two separate buckets here. So the first signal timing review is set at a cost of $80,000, but this is actually the applicant doing this work. This will be an actual traffic review and looking at the timing of the lights and redoing them if necessary at 60% occupancy and 80% occupancy. And before you ask me counselor why 60 and 80, because I asked my traffic engineer the same question, this is to allow for adjustment when there's a sufficient level of occupancy for traffic patterns to be normalized, which is generally seen at 60%. And then a final review at what considered stabilized occupancy, which is considered 80% for a traffic review. So that's why they do it at 60 and 80% and not maybe at 100% like you would expect. So we would do those first two reviews at 60 and 80%. But I know that there was some discussion about, well, what if we have issues after the fact? So the next one, which is mitigation item number three, is dealing with exactly that. Should the board or the town perceive this an issue after full occupancy at 100%, we are going to donate to the town $40,000 so they can do their review and redo the timing of the lights, should it be necessary. There's a typo in that last box that we didn't carry over, so the gift to the town, the contribution to the town is 40,000. So that last box should say 40,000 as well. I apologize for that. The $40,000 is our actual cost to do it. So you can see in the cell above, we have an 80, that's for two, 40 for one for the town. The next one is a donation to the town of Westford Council on Aging Transportation Program. We've heard a lot about this. This is a shuttle service that the town of Westford actually already provides. We've talked about the great service it is for the town of Westford. We're going to have new members of the town of Westford, presumably some of them may use this service if they can't get to the alternative transportation. So what we're suggesting is a contribution directly to that system for $30,000. The next one is solar. I know we talked about this at the end of the last meeting. The only thing I want to point out here is that we're in compliance with the Stretch Energy Code, the new energy compliance for this development. We've talked a lot about electricity. But one of the requirements of the new Stretch Energy Code is that all the residential structures are solar ready. So we tried to do something over and above here, and I think it was actually Dylan's suggestion, that we made all of the garages solar ready. And then on top of that, we want to step further and we're proposing to put the actual solar panels on 50% of the garages. So on four of the garages, we'll actually install the solar panels. And you see the cost attributable to that. That is our cost to install it, we're not asking the town to do it, I'm just putting a number next to it so you can see what it would cost us. Mr. Chair, I'm just going to take the other two out of order because I think there's a little bit more of a discussion I want to have on the affordable mix. So I'll just skip down to the irrigation well. This one is straightforward, I think, as well. At the last meeting, the board had talked about us watering and some of the watering issues we were having as regular residents of the town of Westford because one of the wellheads has gone down. So we've offered to put in an irrigation well so we won't have any sort of impact to the town of Westford water system for any of our landscaping watering for any irrigation. So that's the cost attributable to that. The last one is to support the Westford pedestrian plan implementation. This one's actually two pieces, I guess I should have put it on two on the chart. But one is an actual gift to the town of Westford, which is we will prepare the concept plan and do the cost analysis for an actual proposal, for another Mass Works proposal for the sidewalk down Powers Road. That's what's attributable to the $10,000, that's our engineers' work to actually do the plan and the cost estimates so the town can take that bite-sized piece and then apply for the money necessary to construct it along Powers Road. The second part of that section is that we're actually going to give easements on our property. I know we've talked about this a little bit, but we have an easement going to Bell, but there's some other options for easements along our property where there could be connection in the future where there's not right now. We are going to give those easements to the town of Westford, so should you find connectivity in some of your pedestrian implementation plans and the other abutters also want to cooperate, you'll already have the easements on our property. So that's the second piece of that.
Could I ask one question on the irrigation well?
Yes.
Understand the applicant installing it, can we have a condition that the owner occupant will be responsible to maintain it?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, we would install it and maintain it. Yes.
And you say we, and I want to make it clear that it's the
We, the applicant, will maintain it.
The owner will maintain it because the applicant may sell the property.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'd agree to a condition to maintain it. And we're going to be putting in, the applicant will be putting in a very heavy amount of landscaping out there that we do not want to die. So it's only in our best interest as well to make sure it's watered and going on in the future. All right, so the last one going back out of order is to diversify and increase the number of affordable units. So you see a couple of options up there. This is to directly respond to board and other comments about what else can you do about affordability? Can you give us some variation? Can you help us with workforce housing? We did meet with the Subcommittee for the Affordable Housing Trust, which was very helpful. We went through a variety of options that included these two options, but there were a few others. These two options are the options that that Subcommittee supported the most. Both of these options give you more affordable units than what is proposed right now. The requirement is 53 units. You can see the top option gives you 63, the second option gives you 58. Both options increase the affordability, give you a diversity in types of affordability. This one doesn't have a cost attributable to it. Why? It changes constantly. The price of a market rate unit changes constantly, the price of an affordable unit changes constantly, so the nexus will always change. And remember, this condition that we're agreeing to goes on in perpetuity, forever. So really, this is not math that we can calculate, but you can see that the applicant's making a good faith effort to try to find some alternative mix here that may be more palatable to the Affordable Housing Trust and this board. We're not asking the board to say tonight, yes applicant, we want 63 units, this is the mix of affordability, this is what we want to go forward with. What we're looking for the board to tell us tonight is, yes applicant, we like this diversification, we like that you're adding it, one of these options would be palatable to us, please go fine tune with the Affordable Housing Trust and come back with an option, either A or B, or one of these fine-tuned options, and that would be the condition of approval if the board approves this project. Just so you can understand what I'm looking for tonight, I'm not looking for you to approve one of those. And just to give you, I won't deep dive into this, I promise Mr. Chair, but we did go through this with the Affordable Housing Trust, and I think it's worthwhile just for the board to know. We did poll the current prices for Bell, and I'll have Joe pick up the link so you don't have to take my word for it, so you can actually see what the market rate unit is in Westford right now. It's higher than even I expected. The first one, all the way to the left, is their studio. So the studio is at Bell Westford, I use Bell Westford as the example because it's the closest in proximity. So you can see the range of market rate prices. So you have 2,200 to 4,100 for the studios. You can see there's a bunch of one bedrooms, they range from 2,271 to 4,595. They have a bunch of two-bedroom options, which range from 3,131 to 5,610. And here's the winner, the one that got me the most, which was the three-bedroom units that are priced at 4,835. That top number I did not make up, this is why I had Joe actually bring up the website itself, which is $9,263. The most shocking part of that one is that it's not available to rent, which means it must be rented. When you look at these prices, you can see that the market in Westford for rentals is high, higher than even I expected. So when you're looking at the nexus between the actual market rate in Westford and the 50%, the 60%, the 80%, and the 100%, the nexus is huge. It really is a big number. So when people ask, why do we create workforce housing? Why should we worry about this? Why aren't we focused on just 80 and lower? There's a lack of housing to support the 100%. Some people will see that 100% number and think, oh, that's market rate, that's 100% of the income, so that must mean that's what people around here can afford to rent. That's absolutely not the case. That's 100% of the area median income. Somebody that makes 100% of the area median income can afford 30% of that towards their rent costs. And what you see in green here is what they can afford to pay rent for. So if you look at the top line here, this is the 80% rents. So a studio at 80% is 1573, and then you can read across, I won't read them all the way across for you. You can see the 100% numbers. So when you look at the 100% numbers, you can see why there's a need for it. The 100% people wouldn't be able to rent the 80% units because they make too much income. So without the 100% units, which is considered workforce housing, these people would be clearly out of the market in the town of Westford. So that's why you create workforce housing. No, you cannot count them on their inventory, but the good news for the town of Westford is you've done such a good job at creating affordable housing that you have a buffer. And if the applicant actually goes up a few of the units as they've proposed to, you don't really lose much below your 10% in this project, and you get the benefit of picking up the 100%. I can answer questions about this chart, we actually had our affordable housing consultant prepare this chart so you could see what the actual costs were today, you can see what the actual affordable market rate costs are today at Bell Westford, and why we're proposing the mix.
So Joe, can these files be shared with us?
Yes.
I don't think they're in the packet.
These aren't the, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, we just received them today.
Yeah.
This is really informative, not just for this project, but for the town of Westford.
Right. This is the information that we shared with the Affordable Housing Trust when we had a discussion with their Subcommittee. And just, I really thought it was important to have numbers for now, even though our occupancy is not right now, just so people could actually see what's the difference between an 80% AMI unit and a market rate unit. So we can make these available, I actually brought some hard copies. I heard you were having internet problems, so I brought hard copies of the Bell prices as well, just so you can see it. But that is our mitigation table that we're proposing to the board. We really tried as a team to go across all of the board's concerns and try to mitigate each and every one of them. What we need from the board this evening is direction that this mitigation is sufficient to proceed with the five-story plan so that we can move on. So at the August meeting, we can actually respond to Dodson and Flinker and tie and bond and have a substantive discussion about design. With that, I've spoken enough tonight. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Before you go any further, Joni, you want to comment on this?
Yes, I would like to. So we did, it was myself and two other members of the Affordable Housing Trust with Jeff also on the call. And we had four options put in front of us, they were all excellent options, but the trust all felt that the two that we have almost on this matrix were the best options for affordable housing in Westford for several reasons. One, primarily because our housing production plan goals include trying to get affordable housing at lower AMIs, not the 80%, which both of these do get us more units at lower AMIs. The other goal in the housing production plan is to increase workforce housing. And although, again, we're caught on our SHI where we are headed, we felt that getting more units for workforce is really critical because as Melissa explained, 100% of AMI folks cannot afford market rate rents in Westford, it's just impossible. So we kind of narrowed it down, the group narrowed it down to either of these options or a combination thereof where we were very happy with the flexibility that John and Melissa presented to us and that we could maybe work with it.
Great, awesome.
And Mr. Chair, just to that point, if the board tells us to proceed here that they're happy with these mixes, we'll go back and meet with the Affordable Housing Trust and come back at the August meeting with a single word.
Great, awesome.
I do have one request on an earlier item, and that was the Westford senior van. Could we have an option as opposed to a one-time payment to have it be an annual payment? Obviously it'd be less, but you know, as long as this complex is existing, I'm expecting there to be some demand for that van to this complex. And so I'd like to be able to look at, you know, a long-term funding option as opposed to just a one-time lump sum payment.
Well, just to that point, Mr. Chair, we're trying to have conditions that end at occupancy so that there's not a forever payment to be made yearly. And certainly we don't want to base it on use because we don't want people to feel as though they can't use it or there'd be a fee allocated to it, but we can continue to work on the board with that condition. But we'd like whatever condition it is to end at final occupancy.
Okay. No, you're talking.
Yes, I mean, you could earn the interest on whatever it is that we are gifting it to the town as a contribution. And the nice part about the contribution to the Council on Aging is we come with no strings. So as your chairman points out, they could invest it and use the money over time if they don't have the need for it at that time.
Any other comments or thoughts Bob, so far?
Not on this. On the packet, yes.
Oh, forget to the other.
Yes.
Joni?
I would like to add one other thing too on affordable housing. One thing that we did talk a lot about was spreading the units across the mix, and obviously that is going to happen. It will be, 53 will be spread across, so it's, you know, 53, I think that was the number we used, you know, 53 beds, then 10% or five would be affordable. So I think that's important for everyone to note to.
Right.
Okay, great. Joel?
Yeah, on the solar topic, in the updated site plan overview, just to make sure that I'm clear, are the parking spaces with the C on them, like charging?
Compact.
Oh, compact.
Yeah, they're not charging. We have a percentage that has to be, already has to have that electric stations, I'm not sure what the number is at the top of my head, but those are the compact spaces. And we're not asking for any relief there, that's just in conformance with your bylaw.
Gotcha. So understanding the level of commitment and thank you for the effort that you've put forward on the solar side, understanding the economic level of, I guess, investment you're willing to make into the property, is it fair to say that if we got into a formal site plan review, you'd be flexible on how those dollars were allocated to like use solar energy in the site?
The 210?
Yeah.
Sure, I mean, that's the cost attributable to actually installing it.
Yeah.
So if the board found, you know what, we don't actually want these installed, we'd like the money used elsewhere for environmental purposes, is that what you're thinking?
No, one topic that came up, we were talking about how do you get people access to using the walking trails planned in the site from the larger community. There was a conversation, I think, at one point, where we were talking about allowing there to be some public use parking spaces.
Yes.
And the thought crossed my mind, if one or two of those had electronic charging, that becomes an asset that the whole town can take advantage of, since electronic charging isn't always easily available everywhere.
Sure.
But if people knew, hey, there's a couple of EV chargers there, I can park my car, I can charge it for an hour, I can enjoy a walk while my car is like charging and then I can be on my way, that could be an asset to the town as well.
Yeah.
Just trying to gauge flexibility on how those funds are used, it looks like you're willing to make the commitment in offsetting some of the cost of electricity or the use of electricity by the site.
Right.
I assume there's some flexibility there when we get into the site-specific details.
Absolutely, yes.
Fantastic. Great, then I have another question.
All right, awesome. Dan?
Just clarification on the affordable mix, either for Attorney Robbins or Joni. So the units at 60 and 80 that are proposed, those would count towards the affordable housing inventory, but the 100% would not, even though they're less than market rate?
Correct.
It has to be 80 or less than on the SHI.
The state allows you to jump through all the hoops, so we could still, we still have to, we can still file for a local action application, we could still have a regulatory agreement, the units can still last in perpetuity, they just cannot count on your inventory.
Got it. Thank you. All right, I guess I will go to the audience. I would like the questions to be directed towards this, at this point, the proposed mitigation, one that they're talking about. Note that we have not voted to on the five-story, the four-story, there's some misconception out there that we have, we have not. We have suggested that we may be interested in going that way, depending on the mitigation that's been offered. I'd like to also point out that five-story or four-story, they're entitled to the amount of units that they're going to be entitled to, that's not going to be changed, depending on the size of the building. Something to think about is that these aren't going to be set to be sold, they're looking for rent, and if I'm in business, I'm looking for that $5,000 for that three-bedroom, and I want to have a nice place to rent. So I think the applicant is inclined to make a place as attractive as possible and as many amenities as possible, so. Having said that, again, if you'd like to come up and speak to the proposed mitigation, we'd like to hear comments from the audience. Steve?
Yeah, we just, we have a couple of printouts of the table that you have on the screen, if anyone wants some. We also have some of the income levels that people care. Thanks for some of that.
Good evening, you know, where do you not sit? What is Westford's AMI?
The, well, it depends on the size of the, you know, household, yeah. For one person, yeah, there's the AMI. So 100% AMI, which means the person cannot, it's
So a household of three, their AMI is 123 to 10.
Right, but that's, with that, they cannot afford market rate.
Right, no, I understand, okay.
That's why we're going to have the 100%.
And recognize that we are in the whole district, and it's not just Westford.
Okay, so it averages all communities, not just Westford? Okay, all right, thank you. And then on the mitigation, the signal timing review, wasn't that already required of them? So should that count as part of their mitigation?
A traffic study was required of them. So I think that that's over and above what was actually required. I think the signal retiming
I thought they'd already
And they're also offering to do this after 60% and 80%, so I think
Yeah, so we can't, no one can speak for Mastot. It is possible that Mastot may have some requirements for evaluating that, but I do believe that once you get the 100% and say you do a year after 100% occupancy, I don't see that that has been perhaps a Mastot requirement, that's certainly above and beyond what we've seen. I think we've only seen that in one other project in town, when it was volunteered by the applicant.
Okay, I just thought that that was already part of what they were offering to do before they had to come up with mitigation, so if that's, you're telling me that's not the case, that's fine. Thank you.
I think they did, they may have suggested that at 60 and 80% previously.
Yes, before they asked, or asked for mitigating things.
Before they presented this specific proposal.
Yes, and if I recall correctly, they agreed to that before they had to come up with this.
Well, nobody's agreed to any of that. So this is still
Correct, yeah, correct, yeah.
I have a quick classification question. So the applicant
Name and address, please.
Sergey, Trailside Way 2. So the applicant is suggesting all of those items or is it just part of them?
They're proposing all of these items.
All of those items.
Well, there's an option for the affordable housing, but option A or option B.
Yeah, but as line items.
It's a package.
It's a package of all of them. Okay. Okay, thank you.
You are. Any other questions on the proposed mitigation? Bob, you have?
Sorry about that, one more clarification question, one second. Still Sergey, still two Trails anyway. Did the applicant remove any of the proposed things, like the trail that they proposed in the previous?
It's still on the proposed drawing.
And it's still part of the package still? So there is no reduction?
Attorney Robbins respond, but it does on the packet that we have.
Mr. Chair, we've taken nothing off the table, this is a mitigation package, including what we've previously proposed.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more.
Edsall?
Just a clarification also, Attorney Robbins, on the traffic study, the $10,000 proposed to contribute to the planning?
Yes.
That would be beneficial, I think, for the, you know, the proposed grant money that we're putting to work in that area as well, right? Jeff, is that the idea here, is that would be sort of?
So I don't want to, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we are working on a sort of pedestrian master plan, and I think the thought is, once the plan is complete, there'll be a series of projects that could directly benefit this project and, you know, the greater area in McMod. And so there will be monies needed for either design or installation or even to use as matches or in-kind matches for additional grant applications. So I think the intent was to freely give that for the town to use for those purposes consistent with that plan that's evolved.
And just to your point, in my experience, some of the harder things to do when you don't have the money from a municipal perspective is to get the design work done because your staff can do the applications, but if you don't have the design and the bid to go to the state, you can't get there. So that's why we've offered to pick up that piece so that it's plug-and-play ready to go to a Mass Works or other application to get funding.
And they can do it cheaper than we can do it.
Yeah, just clarification, because it's helpful to know that that's part of a bigger, the scope is bigger than just the $10,000 for the planning.
Yes.
Bob, you had another, before, is there any other questions or comments on mitigation? Does anybody want to see anything different? Lord? The audience have any thought? Go ahead.
Barb Cornelius, Tenth Aspet Road. So someone recently sent me an article about the Braintree development that the same applicant was
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Someone recently sent me the article about the Braintree, the same applicant was trying to build a facility at Braintree, and it was rejected. It did go down from 495 to 300.
We're not going to talk about
No, no, the reason I'm bringing it up is that that had 495 units, but 180 were reserved for seniors. So I was curious why the mitigation for our, the senior level is such a lower number than another proposal.
We don't have a senior number.
So that there is the, not senior, but the affordable housing?
Affordable.
So would that still be, like, where did you get that number, just from your discussion? So if they, if they had proposed a higher number for a bigger development, another development similar in size, is there any leeway with that, or is that just?
So affordables aren't limited to seniors, affordable's for everyone across the board. A senior could apply for an affordable if they are affordable. A senior could apply for an affordable if they are affordable. So where, we did talk to the applicant about senior housing right at the beginning of this, and the idea is, there are first-floor units, and it's, you know, senior, the idea is one-level living, it's not only about affordability. So there is a requirement in the bylaw to provide 10% of the units as affordable, which means they must provide 53 units at 80%.
Okay.
So they are giving either more, more units at, some at lower affordability, so someone that makes even less money can apply for these units. And we also have these, this number at 100% AMI.
Yes.
15, 100% AMI, which will allow people who are in that, just above that affordable gap, that limit, to be able to still apply here. And we have found that in Westford, there is a huge need for that.
Okay.
I think the other comment, it's hard to compare communities, you've got to look, Westford has an analysis, we have a housing plan.
Yeah.
And so we are trying to address the needs identified in that housing plan with these proposals for different developments, whether it's MBTA or not, you try to look at how you're addressing that need of the community. And you can't really compare us to a community on the South Shore.
Yeah, and I know for like our strategic plan, a lot of it was, when I was reading it, was more like, you know, giving development, smaller housing, like giving construction to smaller building housing, or whatever. And I know like for myself, my kids would prefer a small house than live in an apartment, where they already live in one in Boston. So I guess, I know we're looking at other infrastructures that currently exist, that we could convert, things like that, which would, you know, seem to like go with the town character, that's all, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, David Penfield, Eighteenth Brook Road. I had a question about the gifts to the town. Is that money then restricted on what the town can do with it, or does it just go into the general fund?
Well, Attorney Robbins, answer that, I don't think it would be, depends on what it was going into, right? If it's $30,000...
The pedestrian plan implementation, there are $10,000. Would that be earmarked to a specific town committee to use?
That's the value of the gift, it's not, they're not providing that money necessarily to the town.
Well, they are in a donation, go ahead, Jeff.
So, in the past, where an applicant has decided to gift money to a town for a specific purpose, usually the select board has to accept that gift, and usually it sits in a special place where it's reserved for that purpose only. And to my knowledge, the select board has always honored that, it has a specific purpose and it's tied to that. If it goes to the general fund, it's, well, it's not set aside for that specific purpose.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay, any other mitigation questions? Bob, you had another question?
I had a point, in the past, we have an angry letter that made the assertion that we had approved the five-story plan, and that is not the case. I think they, everybody needs to understand, what we're doing right now is we are negotiating, and we have expressed a preference of the five-story versus the four-story, based upon the sidewalk and the balloon test that took place in early June. But at any point, if something goes awry here, we could turn back and say, no, we're sticking with the four-story, we're not giving waivers. What we're trying to do here, however, is, we made an assessment that five-stories appears to be preferable in terms of increasing the buffer with the surrounding roads and neighborhoods, and we're trying to address the neighbors' concerns about seeing this development and hiding it as best as possible from the surrounding residential areas. And that's what we're doing. But, again, there's waivers required, we haven't said we're going to grant the waivers, we are in the process of looking at what we could get as a favor for granting those waivers, but nothing's been decided. I just want to make that very clear, where we are with this process. And we still have a long ways to go in terms of a lot of the negotiations for different aspects of this proposal. That's it.
Thank you, Bob. I guess, we'll go back to the board, anything else? If not, we'll go to the audience to give them a little bit of time for general questions. Anybody else have any? If you have a question or comment besides the litigation, name and address, please.
So, I know you said that...
Name and address, please.
Becky Brown to Nate Vinebrook Road. And I know you said that you haven't made a decision on five-story versus four-story, I understand that. And I know you said that they are entitled to 550 units, does that mean that that's been decided?
530 was the proof of concept.
Has that been decided on, or is it possible to ask them to lower that at this point in time?
So that's their call, they could come up to us with up to 530 units. We could say, we think it's too dense, but it doesn't matter at this point, they can, as long as they can show that they can get the amenities and the sewer system and the water, electricity, they can have the 530 units.
The 530 units were allowed by right without, as long as they didn't require a waiver. And that was what the four-story plan was being used to show.
Okay.
Sorry, you're not wearing that. What's the status of the water study? I don't think I've seen it online yet.
I don't believe I've seen it either, Mr. Morissette, do you have any?
I did ask the superintendent for an update, my understanding is that they'll be bringing it to the Board of Water Commissioners to review the draft before it's available for public consumption.
Is there a timing on that?
I believe it's imminent. I don't know, I didn't check, I think there was, I don't know if there's another agenda for the Board of Water Commissioners posted, check and see if that's on the agenda, but, but again, they have to address the concern.
Right, no, I was just wondering what the status of the list, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions, comments? Attorney Robbins, anything else?
No, Mr. Chair, I think that the only other thing I need from this board is direction, and maybe in the form of a straw poll, that this, you know, mitigation that we're offering is sufficient for us to go forward with the design, so that then we can respond to the outstanding comments that we have to Dotson and Flinker and tie a bond.
All right, are we willing to non-voting vote on our thoughts on this mitigation? Are we okay with that?
I have one clarification, Mike, Mr. Chair. We did talk about last week as well, last meeting, I should say, confirmation of the number of units in the four-story plan, and I would just like to get confirmation from Dotson and Flinker, also if that four-story plan would meet the criteria for MBTA community design.
Didn't we ask the last week?
Yes, we did, but I'm not sure he gave us a sufficient, an answer.
I believe the question was asked, and I thought, the consultant said, it appears to meet, but we can double-check that, I thought there was a conversation to that.
You're talking from a site plan design perspective?
Yes.
Well, yes, because if the number of units could be five, or five, 48, or whatever it is, in the four-story plan, that would establish the number of units. But if in fact, that four-bedroom plan doesn't have the setbacks and everything else required, well then maybe that number becomes 520.
So I do believe when they provided the four-story plan, they provided all the required parking spaces and met all the required setbacks, and I do believe the consultant indicated it appeared to meet at least those requirements.
Yeah, and I thought, based on the original design, five-story plan, their opinion was, the four-story plan actually laid out the MBTA communities' like block style, the use of the space was actually more consistent with our bylaw regarding the McMod layout concept of blocks.
Correct.
I remember that as a comment.
But just the number of units, if we can get that just confirmed, then no...
I think they, they did confirm the total number with the four-story and the parking and the setback.
Yep. Just a reminder, then, I wasn't sure, so just a clarification for you.
Have, wait, while we're on sort of clarifying topics, Jeff, have we heard back, we were getting third-party counsel comment back regarding the wetlands and the impact on a parcel zone for MBTA community use, and our interpretation in our bylaw versus what we heard in public comments earlier on, have we gotten any?
So we have done a couple of things, so first, we did ask NIMCOG for some assistance, NIMCOG who did the original modeling, according to the state's methodology. They did rerun all the calculations and confirmed that it was the correct modeling. We did review all our correspondence with EOHLC, and we did confirm that their requirement is that, I'll try to make this simple, if you have a large lot and half of it is wet, you can't say that you only get the 15 units per acre on the dry or offland here, because then your lot and the district would not meet the 15-unit-per-acre density minimum required. So we can't do anything that could result in a lesser density than 15 units per acre when looking at the entire lot or the entire district. And I don't know if that helps or not, but we can't do what you want us to do, it would not, we would not be compliant with the law. We did put a limitation, though, on the amount of wetland areas that could potentially count towards the open space requirement. My understanding is, looking at it, that doesn't even come into play here. Thank you.
One follow-up on the water commissioners?
Yep.
This Thursday, they meet at 9:00 a.m., the 24th of July, and item number six on their agenda is to review water system impact study results for 37 Powers Road.
Thank you.
All right, so what kind of direction do we want to give the applicant here? I think that we've insinuated before that we're in favor of, I won't speak for everybody, but I insinuated before I'm in favor of the five-story plan, given the layout, as Bob said, the distance from the road, the impact to the neighborhood, I think, in my opinion, mitigation on top of this is just, is that much more attractive, especially with the affordable housing.
Yeah, I totally agree, and just so we're very clear for the audience, because I know there's been a lot of misconceptions, misunderstanding, the same number of units exist in the four-story versus the five-story, it's 530 units. There were fewer buildings, so the buildings had more units in them when there were four stories, more were units before. But ultimately, what we were looking at was trying to see how much setback we could achieve, especially from Powers Road. And with the four-story, the building was placed up very close to Powers Road, and we learned that they would be clearing up to Powers Road to support the construction, and then only after construction was done would there be some re-vegetation, so.
And I think I'd like to add that I agree with what Bob just said, I think, looking at the four-story plan and seeing the impact to the road, seeing the impact to the area, seeing how visible it will be, it was surprising. So I think that combined with the fact that the proposed mitigations, I believe, are really good for the town, in a bigger sense, I think it benefits a lot of people, I think the entire town, so I think, in that sense, it's something we should look at.
You want to offer some thoughts?
Yeah, this is an interesting, I mean, you know, my, my comments have been, I think, pretty consistent from the start, I have three primary impacts, traffic, impact to town utilities, namely water and electrical, and then obviously the visual impact and like, you know, character of the neighborhood and things like that, those are my main areas. I do think that the applicant has put together a very solid list of, I guess, offerings as part of the project, that I think go a long way to showing a commitment to offset some of my concerns, which is great. The piece for me, Mr. Chair, is that, you know, I just think it's interesting that this is the first MBTA Communities Act that we're taking this far, and we're going sort of well beyond, you know, what's stated in the zoning bylaw as the norm. So I have some concerns that, even though we are not setting a precedent with any decision that we make, Mr. Morissette, this feels a little bit like, you know, this board is going beyond what the zoning bylaw allows, based on our years of expertise doing this and understanding a project like this, the impact that it could have, and thinking on behalf of the town and doing our best to try to come up with a creative plan to get this in in a way that looks really good and is representative of what Westford's character is, mitigating the potential negative impacts on development like this has to the town, but if we take this decision to allow this, to have this number of waiver variance, as we are setting a very clear, in a way, we're setting a precedent with what we're willing to accept against what is a relatively new amendment to our zoning bylaws, right? And, you know, there's, in the court of public opinion, we're not going to come out of this smelling like roses for taking that decision, even though it may be the right thing to do.
But maybe more people are going to get involved.
Well, that's always the case.
I would just, I would just add that I think the layout of the five-story is more consistent with what we're looking for from the MBTA Communities District. We looked at properties in Westford that are basically acres of pavement, and some have unused buildings on them, and we wanted to get rid of that. And we figured, you know, in MBTA communities, it's a good way to do that, if you can make that land more productive, more attractive. And here, this is an example of that. If you look at the other option, the four-story, it looks very similar to one of the sort of underused developments that we want to try to replace, so I think that's why I'm leaning towards the five-story.
Can you give me direction, Attorney Robbins?
Yeah, so I'm hearing the board wants us to proceed with the five-story plan, and generally, no further comments on the mitigation package to offset.
I think some fine tuning, like Dylan had said, with some solar option, but I think that, I think the general directions, in my opinion, is good.
Right, and just to respond quickly to Dylan's comment, I mean, I don't think we're far exceeding what the bylaw allows for, what we're discussing right now is height, a height special, that's it. Some of the waivers are technical waivers, that the way that the bylaw is written, that you have to ask for. I think that I counted, there's at least 14 waivers that you have to ask for if you're not creating a street, an actual town-accepted road. So just by nature, the way the bylaw is written, you have to ask for a bunch of waivers. So I don't think that, just because you have to ask for waivers, means that you've moved away from the bylaw. It just gives the board an opportunity to look at things that are considered standard, because this board generally looks at standard subdivisions, so why are we moving away from it, why isn't it necessary, and why is it still safe?
Sure.
Just because they're listed, I don't think that that's far outside the norm.
Yeah.
Because I think every, every MBTA community project that you're going to have before you is going to have that almost the same set of subdivision waivers that Time Bond's going to be looking for.
It's the height.
Yeah, it's the height.
They're going to be very sensitive to it.
Right, right, and because the other, and the other McMod waivers are lesser requests, number of bikes, height of the lights, and there's one other waiver request now, and that's it, because we'll be withdrawing the number of parking space waiver requests with the new layout, so.
Fully understood.
Right. Does the board have any other questions?
So we, next meeting is August 18th.
Mr. Chair, is there going to be another meeting, or is that the first meeting the board's going to have? I know that that's a busy agenda.
We haven't discussed it, we, there was some discussion about it, but we haven't set another meeting.
Okay, so yes, we've requested to go to your next available meeting.
Well, we would have a discussion now about an additional meeting? I know, Mr. Morissette, what are your thoughts there? I know that we have a big agenda for the 18th of August.
So if we, if we continue to August 18th, I would ask to see if the board is amenable to starting earlier. I believe we have no fewer than...
Nine.
Nine public hearings, which includes probably five zoning bylaw amendments. We may have even a couple more, there are some applications that may also have to be heard, so we could have somewhere between nine and 13 public hearings, if this is continued there, so.
I know there was some talk about it, I don't know that I've read all the emails, is there availability for the board on the fours, if people are available or willing, or vacation? I know it's tough in August.
Yeah.
Bob?
I should be able to...
Can I ask a question of the applicant? How much time would you need to actually revise plans?
We've been working on the revised plan, really, we have to respond in writing to the Dotson and Flinker letter, I guess the real question is, how long is it going to take Dotson and Flinker to respond to what...
How much time would you need to actually revise plans?
We've been working on the revised plan. Really, we have to respond in writing to the Dotson and Flinker letter. I guess the real question is, how long is it going to take Dotson and Flinker to respond to what we have to submit? So, you know, I don't think a week would be enough time, but somewhere probably in the middle would be enough time. I do agree with Jeff. If there's not a special meeting to start earlier, it would be great, just so that we could have time. Because the next meeting for this matter, because the, just even the Dotson and Flinker letter alone is a very long letter, so we'll have sufficient time to go through to fill up an hour or two, probably, with just this hearing item.
Do you want to try the 11th? I just hate, when it gets late, nothing productive happens.
Could we do one on the fourth that doesn't require...
Well, if there's nine items, there might be stuff for public hearing.
To do some things that doesn't require everybody here. Meaning, maybe it's a short version.
Can we do that, Jeff? Put stuff that may be...
Dylan, if Dylan can't be here on the fourth, the rest of us can. Could we do some things not this, not this item, but some other items that don't necessarily require everybody?
General business items?
I mean, it's possible, but I think the bulk of the agenda is really public hearing items, so we cannot schedule them unless they're continued from tonight. We cannot schedule them sooner than...
But are some of them, I mean, this one, obviously Dylan needs to be at, right? But are there some of the ones, like the zoning, where losing a vote isn't critical?
Well, why don't we, we could discuss that. They don't need, so obviously, unfortunately, you guys have to go back on the 18th.
I was just going to say, the other option is to schedule the, I guess, date for the public hearing on the zoning bylaw amendments on a different meeting date.
Well, that's what I mean. Maybe we look at the fourth for things that Dylan doesn't need to be...
The fourth would have had to been advertised before today.
Oh, has to be.
It has to be probably after the 18th to start the public hearing.
Okay.
Under the zoning bylaw, so.
So, Mr. Chair, would we be starting at an earlier time?
Six o'clock.
Okay. And the 11th, I don't know if the board has already dismissed the 11th, but that would give us sufficient time.
Yeah.
Okay. So yes, we just would request that we start earlier, just, and we'll try to keep it as brief as possible.
All right. That's all we can ask.
Can I also ask, is the board interested in further input from the Affordable Housing Trust Committee?
Yes.
Because they, as a full board, have not weighed in on this yet, only the subcommittee.
Yes, I'd like to hear what they say. Yeah, well, Joni can report to that.
Yep, we will definitely be before that.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, we'll go back.
The data files, because I'd like to look at those a little more.
Yes.
All right, so are you taking more public comment?
Oh, do you want to, for the other?
Yes, just a short comment. I was in every town meeting on the subject. I don't remember that there was a full analysis of four floors plan with a full calculation. Maybe it was there, but it wasn't presented to the public, especially when you emphasize the sizes of the apartments, and if it's the same size of apartments of five-story planning. So maybe I missed the part I wanted to be on record. I didn't see it. I was in every planning meeting. Maybe if it is the first time that we are on such a big project in this town, we need to have enough diligence, and it should be on record somewhere, that there is a full proof for stories planned there, and it's shown that it has 530 units, possible to build.
So the, they're not going to do a full analysis. They're doing, they did what's called a proof plan.
Yeah.
That shows that they can meet the setback requirements, and they can get the number of units, 530 or 530, whatever that is, into that proof plan. The whole reason that we've had this exchange is that the applicant wants to know whether or not to pursue the five-story or the four-story plan. So unfortunately, we're not, we're not going to get, we're not going to get both.
No, no, I understand that. But do you guys, as a board, can, with full level of confidence, say that a four-story plan is possible to build with 530 units, the same size of units as a five-story plan that is proposed? Right? If that's so, great.
So we need to ask this of our consultant at the last meeting, whether or not they believe that they could get 530 units.
I was there.
Yeah.
But the answer wasn't allowed yes. It was a wishy-wash answer.
Can I?
Yes, please.
So, at the end of the day, unless we tell the applicant to go forth and make a four-story plan, and go all the way down the line and have it seen by every town board, we're not going to know that that 530 number, which came up with the proof plan, is or isn't actually buildable. Like, it could be plus or minus 5%.
Yeah. At this point, we don't know for sure we can get 530 units out of five-story buildings, because it hasn't gone to engineering view, right?
That's true.
But your level of confidence is much higher. Four-story plan was very preliminary.
The point is, we take all of these investments off the table, that we instruct them to go down the four-story, like, road, right? So we're leaving it on the table.
I understand. But we are also, there's a high-risk decision here, and I don't know if we made enough, if we haven't deep enough understanding for the town, right? For such a big decision, that a four-story plan is actually 530 units. And for that, I don't think we have an answer. At least, I didn't get an answer.
I think one of the most important studies is coming up this week, and that is the water impact study results. And that is pretty much the same, whether it's 530 units packed into four stories or into five stories.
I, that's one part of the story. The other part of the story is the physical location. Is there enough space? So those two are separate and related to each other, but I said.
But we have had town engineering look at the plans, correct, Jeff?
We had our consultants look at those.
We had the consultants.
Can we get a yes from the consultant? That 530 units for the next week?
In the packet, there is confirmation from you, right? Analysis was done to produce the 530.
I could not find it. Is it possible to find?
Yeah.
And once again, I think it's an important point, is also to say that it's the same size of apartments. It's not, you know, all one-room studios that feed into...
It's the same distribution, correct?
Yeah, just to, just to be clear here, Mr. Chair, if I may, this is not setting the basis in a four-story plan. We're losing focus as what sets the basis. It's the, it's the lot that sets the basis, and the basis is 530. Okay? That's the starting point. Doesn't matter what, we could have 42 other sets of plans that show all sorts of different numbers of units. But the basis is set in the zoning bylaw, and the zoning bylaw says 530. The next step is, what does an applicant want to design? We've put a proposal in front of the planning board that shows a five-story plan that uses that basis of 530. The question before the board right now is just on the height. Then you have to go through the technical regulations, as the board members have all said, and make sure that you have compliance with all the site plan review standards for the application that's in front of the board. It's not up to the applicant or the board to design alternative plans to prove the number in the situation, because the bylaw sets it.
Well, this is, I'll confirm one thing. This is not dissimilar to an open space residential development, where, under our bylaw right now, it's an optional process, and to determine the number of units, they have to do what's called a proof plan, proof plan, to see, under a conventional subdivision, how many lots could you likely yield. The planning board does not make the applicant go through the full engineering, the full design, as if they're going to full building. They ask for enough information to show such that they have a reasonable level of confidence that they think it's likely that that can proceed. And then they have the applicant focus their time, money, and efforts on actually pursuing that outcome. So they did think, so the board is reasonably comfortable that they could do a four-story that doesn't need any, what people consider significant waivers. We're throwing, we're discarding the subdivision waivers in this conversation. And I think the board feels as though that they have that, and so now they're trying to give the direction to the applicant for which path to choose. And it sounds like they're choosing the five-story.
That's fine, but I have two questions. One, it's a tricky situation. Does the board feel confident that four stories are 530 units? If the answer is yes, and I asked it several times today, if the answer is yes, correct.
Yes.
Yes. So the board, and then the second part of that, I don't argue with 530 units. It's the developer's privilege to build as much as the bylaw allows them, but we, as a town, we need to decide, should we allow them to build five-story buildings? And if, because of the wetland situation, the calculation is a bit iffy here, if there's not enough actual room to build 530 units without five stories, we need to go around that, and we need to make the decision.
You're back to the first question again, because we agree that the four-story plan, as shown, was respectful of wetland boundaries and all the other site factors, and they gave us a proof they could fit 530 units in four-story buildings within those constraints.
Yeah.
So you're just rewording the first question a different way.
I didn't say announce yes for that, but if that's a yes, that's a yes on the board.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like we are going to August 18th. Can I get a motion to continue?
Motion to continue, TB 2505. It's 37 Powers Road to August 18th, here in meeting number 201 at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
A little favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, members of the board.
Okay, we'll move on in a second to general business. First item, general business A, discuss potential zoning bylaw amendments for the 2025 town meeting, including changes to section 3.3, assessing your dwelling units, changes relative to ground, mountain, storm, and all arrays, and the creation of a tiered site plan review process. And for that, we have a special guest. Give him the clear out.
Actually, I'd like to just turn it over to Jenny, so.
Directly.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Raitt. I'm the executive director of MBTA. Thanks for having me. I worked with my colleagues Kelly Lineama and Isabel Emmett on a number of these items that are before you this evening. However, Isabel is on leave, and Kelly is on vacation. So I am here before you, on behalf of all of them. And I'm, I guess we'll take it one by one. I think probably the easiest thing to do is really, I've provided you with three memos. They all sort of do the same thing, which is review sort of your baseline, where you are today, with your current bylaw, and what needs to change in order to be compliant with state law, or in order to make changes to accommodate solar, in the case of the next item, after ADUs. And then, in the case of site plan review, my understanding is that you previously had a conversation about this topic, and this is really a continuation and a bit of a response to some of the comments that were received. I had the opportunity to work with both of these staff on these various memos, so I hope I can answer as many questions as possible. But if not, I will keep record of everything, and we'll see what we can come back with. My understanding also is that after this evening, potentially, we would provide updated draft language to the town, likely by August 13th, in time for your August 18th meeting. As I just heard from a previous agenda item, that is your intention, to proceed that evening with bylaw amendment discussions. So without, without any further ado, we can talk about accessory dwelling units.
Sure.
However you would like, and I will create notes and respond.
Nope, so I'm sure that we've already reviewed the changes that were provided in the memo. I guess, does the board, will the board have quite a bunch of questions, Bob? Anything that popped out to you that you want to discuss?
Not on this one, no.
Joni?
I have just two things. I think we actually, and I, I know there was discussion about a prohibition in the bylaw on short-term rentals. I didn't see it explicitly stated, and I think that's something that's really important, that we need to have, is have it explicitly stated. And then, I was a little, I got, I got a little bit of, to me, it seemed back and forth on setbacks. So in one location, it appeared that the bylaw still requires existing property setbacks to be maintained, and I think that's important. I don't think we should be lessening setbacks.
Can we just clarify, we've got three topics. Can we just, are you talking about solar?
No, no, I'm talking about ADUs. I'm only talking about ADUs right now.
And then we'll go to the next one.
Yeah.
So I don't know if it'd be helpful for the viewing audience, if you just want to...
Do you want me to go through?
Very quickly, very quickly.
And, 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 great, a little.
Some people might not know.
A little more. Okay. All right. We'll go back to the beginning if you want. How about that? So some, though definitely not all, might know that accessory dwelling units are now a required and allowable use by right. And so what the town is doing is trying to figure out what their current existing zoning bylaw says about accessory dwelling units, and likely make amendments to that bylaw in order to be in alignment with what is now allowed under state law. However, there could be some situations, which is up to the town, where they might want to go above and beyond the bylaw and the requirements under state law to be even more accommodating to accessory dwelling units, or have a separate special permitting process for certain types of accessory dwelling units. That's up to the town. This conversation is based upon, as I noted, a review of the existing bylaw and a cross-check with what is required under the new state law, to understand what you need to amend and change, with some areas where there could be some decisions, like sort of what we're talking about this evening. That might also include things that maybe we overlooked, or we need to look at more carefully again. We did write this in April. So further guidance has continued to evolve from the executive board of Housing and Livable Communities, and so we can certainly make any modifications based upon this discussion this evening, or anything that happens thereafter. The, you obviously have an existing zoning bylaw, and so if you keep scrolling through this memo, what we've done is basically...
Can you stop right there for a second, Joe?
Sure. The proposed language?
We don't have an existing transit station in the town of Westford, is that correct? Does anything meet that definition, such as the bus stop at Market Manscape?
No, those would not, that might, is that right?
Yeah, please.
Okay. No, you don't have a.
And we don't have anything within a half a mile of the town board?
You do not have any option like that.
So that doesn't apply?
That is not applicable.
But do we have to have that in the language, so that if a transit station gets built in the future?
You could choose to.
Is it required, the transit is language?
It is not required, no. It's based upon your current conditions. If at some future point in time you wanted to amend the bylaw to accommodate a transit station, and then reduce the parking accordingly, first off, you could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the proposed, so the paragraph before proposed amended by law language is just sort of, how do you meet the baseline requirements of what's required by state law? Meaning, that's all that we set you up for. It doesn't mean that you can't go above and beyond that. It doesn't mean that you can't change something here. All we did was perform a test of what does your current bylaw say, and how could you amend it to comply with state law? That's it. So we walked through step by step, and similar to, all of these memos are basically the same, where there's an introduction of new language.
There's another comma.
Okay.
You say may be allowed by right. I believe the verb should be shall?
You can change it to shall, but that's...
May is iffy.
Sure. We can change that, absolutely.
I mean, that's what the state law is telling us we have to do.
This is under a special permit requirement.
Right, so that's where it can kind of get into a policy decision of, the state law now allows accessory dwelling units of 50% of the gross square footage, or 900 square feet, whichever is less by right.
All right, so if they want, if they want to get a special permit for a change.
Somebody wants to propose 8,000 square foot accessory dwelling unit, do you want to allow that by special permit?
Okay, okay, so that wasn't clear. This doesn't say why there is a special permit section for something allowed by right.
What you need is to have zone, well, what you can have is zoning in place to accommodate accessory dwelling units by right. What you can also do is have a separate process for special permits for accessory dwelling units, above and beyond the required one accessory dwelling unit per lot. So this is, this is what that suggestion is.
So essentially, you would kind of have like two use categories, I guess, in a way. Protected use ADU, and then, I guess, whatever you want to call it, non-protected use ADU, anything that's over and above what's otherwise allowed under the state regulations by right.
And the protected use ADU, if you can scroll back up again, just to make sure we're all clear on the definition.
Yeah, so for example...
You could go all the way up, actually, to the actual definition, I would appreciate it. So protected use ADU is right there. So it's an attached or detached ADU that's located, or is proposed to be located, on a lot in a single-family residential zoning district, and is protected under 40A, section three, provided that only one ADU on a lot may qualify as protected use ADU. And you can read the rest. The other part of the protected use is that you cannot restrict it to family members. You know, there's other things that you cannot do, which are also outlined in this memo. So that's what we're talking about in terms of the differentiation between protected use versus some other type of ADU that you might want to create that's maybe perhaps bigger, or has other parameters to it. That would be up to you. That is what Joe is saying is as a policy choice for the board.
So, so if we had no ADU language in our zoning bylaw, somebody could build an ADU in Westford by right under state law?
That is correct.
Yep.
Right now, they could go to the building inspector, pull out a building permit application and do that.
And what is the negative consequence to the town, other than perhaps confusion with people looking at our zoning bylaw, if we have zoning bylaw language for ADUs that's inconsistent with the state? Is there an actual penalty? Is there a punitive? Does this damages, is this?
No, well, I guess, so to me, one of the, one of the first questions I would have, like, you know, the town did, town meeting did amend our zoning bylaw, I don't know how many years ago, for ADUs. Ball 2022. To get rid of percentages and things, and now it's back, but I'm over it almost. So somebody would come to the town and they would want to do an ADU, and they actually had a very modest size dwelling to begin with, you know? They had a ranch, it was just one story, it was limited square footage, and they actually needed variance relief to have a 500 square foot accessory dwelling, or even a 450 square foot dwelling. And it was more, at 450 square feet, it was more than 50% of the gross floor. So someone could still have an ADU that's less than 900 square feet, and it wouldn't qualify as a protected use ADU. So if I were a resident homeowner and I wanted to do an ADU, and I want it to be, say, 600 square feet, and it was, and that exceeded the 50% gross floor area, I could not do that under our bylaw if we only had the protected use ADU. So to me, first thing is, do you want to allow ADUs that are at 900 or below, even if it exceeds the 50%? To me, that's a logical, you know, thing to consider. And then we've also had accessory dwelling units come in where they might have been like 950 square feet, but they were, you know, certainly a fraction.
Converting to a carriage house.
It was a large house. Or, right, the carriage house, where you have an existing structure that has been there a while, and it really doesn't make sense to say, sorry, we're going to cut this into four fifths of its size and do all kinds of, you know, gymnastics to only have, you know, that square footage of that carriage house count. So I do think there could be some reasonable considerations to want to allow something that doesn't neatly fit the protected use ADU, but it's a policy question for the town, and then further for that is, do you still want to have owner occupancy requirements for those that aren't protected use ADUs? So right now, we say the owner has to occupy either the primary or the accessory dwelling unit for at least six months of the year. Do you, you know, so that's another policy question, I'm sure that's jumping ahead, but those are some of the reasons why you might want to think about still having a special permit process for ADUs that don't fit protected use.
Question, can't we put that? I thought that restriction, the state took that restriction away, or it's going to have to be.
Yeah, but if it's something under a special permit.
Oh, but this is only a special permit.
This is only through special permit.
Okay, got it.
And that might be why, it would be good to have two separate sections, but.
Right, and so, and this memo is set up to be a discussion with you, it is not the language that we would necessarily propose, okay? So we're trying to vet out what you actually want to do, and that will help us to then rewrite this in a manner that you can use for, you know, when you go forward as we need, if you choose to.
And so now, like with the MBTA's, would the granting authority of the special permit be zoning board, or ZDA, is that something we decide, or?
That would be up to town meeting. Right now, the zoning board of appeals is currently the special permit granting authority. So they have dealt with that a lot over the years.
Yep.
So I guess, perhaps selfishly, given that you might have nine to 13 public hearings scheduled for your next meeting, maybe.
Oh, no, I think that they do a great job with that.
Yeah, okay, so it might be good to keep it.
Yep, I would agree with that.
If you're open to that.
If you choose the special permitting path.
If you choose that, yes.
As one of the options. If you're choosing by right, there's, that's a different conversation altogether, just to be clear.
So I guess it's a question of the board, do we want to keep that provision for a special permit for anything that's not allowed by matter of right? I think there's always exceptions.
Yeah, I would say so.
I think we should.
If it's by right, it's pretty defined what that is, but if the outside use case comes along, it might be worth having, the applicant have an option to have flexibility.
I'm putting on my devil's advocate hat, so the other option would just be to strike the ADU language from the zoning bylaw, say Massachusetts has laws that gives you by right, you can do 900 square feet or half of the space.
Yep.
Otherwise, you're asking for zoning bylaw relief, and you're going to the ZDA and seeing what they grant, right?
Just make it that way, right? I mean, we can't make it any more restrictive than the.
I sometimes feel like we over-engineer.
Oh, I agree.
And just like, see what the market decides, like, you know? If the state laws don't give you what you want, you have zoning relief, go to the ZDA and have a conversation and see what they grant.
So the one thing to consider is that if you simply remove it, and if the use is not allowed to find and regulate it in your bylaw, so if it's an ADU that doesn't meet a protected use under state law, it's a prohibited use, and they would need a use variance to have perhaps a 600 square foot ADU if it doesn't meet the standards. Whereas a special permit process is working with your zoning bylaw. It's a, it's built into the bylaw, it's working with it, and they have discretion to grant it or not in a case-by-case basis. It would be very difficult, setting someone up for a use variance as the permitting path for an ADU is not our favorite idea. It's either you think it should potentially be allowed, and maybe build that into your bylaw, or if you just think, you know, it's either a protected use ADU, or we don't want it. So it's really.
So we have to call out the ADU to allow us to go ahead to allow a special permit?
It doesn't have to be by special permit, we're just saying right now, the current model under our bylaw is, it's a discretionary special permit, so.
So what Dylan's suggestion is, we get rid of the ADU, but I'll still allow discretionary ADU under special permit. So if we're silent, then they could come in and do it by right under state law.
If it, yeah, if it meets the 900 square feet or half of the square.
If it meets all the criteria for a protected use ADU, they can do it. They can do it with a building permit, they still have to meet the customary permitting requirements, like Title V and, you know, conservation.
But if they, but if they had something they wanted to do that didn't meet that criteria, they could go to the zoning board and get relief, right?
Potentially, as long as our bylaw still ends up with a process that allows that.
Right. Here's, I guess here's where I'm going with it. Like, this isn't the board that hears them, we're not the, we're not the special permit granting authority. Therefore, we don't have a track record of hearing these with which to inform the conversation that we're trying to have, which is, what are the different scenarios that come before a board that grants special rights for ADUs? So you're asking a board that doesn't hear those to offer an opinion on how we want to classify ADUs and a way to regulate them. Maybe the zoning board should write the zoning bylaw for, or at least propose language to play.
Right, in this board.
We can use to inform a richer conversation.
Or maybe we should have a joint meeting.
Perhaps.
Is available the 18th?
May have for potentially a pathway. So one other pathway that I was going to suggest early on, especially given that you already have a special permitting process, is that you could amend your bylaw that just simply updates the use table, so it's clear that there's a use for it, it's allowed in specific single-family residential districts, that you talk about what may not be allowed, sort of what is not allowed under state law basically, and that you update your definitions. And then you have a clarity around, what is an accessory dwelling unit versus a protected use ADU? Because I think that is really an important distinction, and at least at a very clear level, and this is under the planning board's purview and jurisdiction, you should at least have that baseline update. Now, if you want to get into the policy side again, and you want to talk about site plan review, you want to talk about what you can reasonably regulate, so to speak, that's a whole separate conversation, and maybe, yes, that should involve other participants in the discussion based upon their experience, but that would be the other, the other thought that I had from the beginning. Rather than going silent, which some other municipalities have chosen that route, and I don't yet know what the attorney general's office will say about that in the future after all of these are reviewed and feedback is provided. I know some of them have come out as, you know, under review, as being not quite in compliance yet with state law, but this would be one other potential pathway.
Joe, can you go over the?
But before you move, though.
Okay.
There is a slight typo at the top of this page. It is section 10, section 20 of our bylaw for the definitions.
All right. And yeah, I think what Jenny is talking about is wait out on the next page, addition of considerations. So maybe looking at these, we can come up with something in the middle.
No, I mean, I think it's good to define, have definitions in there. I'm going to go on, you know, less regulation is better, while I'm saying that, I don't know if you say that.
I agree with that.
I think so too, well, may I just add on that point? The, what happens if the next governor puts in a separate law that's basically overrides this? So now we have no bylaw in place at all. So in that case, we're developing. So at least we have the baseline that still is consistent with the state.
Right, I, I agree with that.
So Jenny, what you were suggesting is the first one, if you stay with the state definition of an ADU, and we have, we add protected use ADU to the zoning plan.
That's one pathway.
Yeah.
And updating your use table.
Yeah.
That would be a simplistic route. The other suggestion was removing the requirements related to special permitting, but that's also up to you to keep that, if that's a different pathway that you want to keep. And then just making it clear that application requirements basically change to that of just not a standard special permitting application, but they would just be for a building permit.
Question. So, so if we define protected use ADU and ADU, and we remove the conflicts, if someone goes for, say, the discretionary ADU, not protected use, they get that, is, can they then follow up and get a protected use ADU on top of that?
They can.
So I just want people to be aware that.
That is important verification.
You could, and I don't know, it's probably going to take case law, that has yet to be written, but it seems like, because right now, our zoning bylaw says you can have only one ADU, but a protected use ADU is not really an ADU.
Essentially.
So if you allow, it could result in.
But they went for the, for the special permit first, and received it, then they could go get one as a matter of right on top of it.
Well, what I don't know is could the special.
Septic would have to accommodate it.
Right, which, not the easiest, but what I, what I don't know is, can you with the discretionary special permit have a condition of approval relative to a protected use? Do you know what I mean? Like, if you want to exercise the discretion to get a special permit, if you get an ADU that's above and beyond what you can get for a protected use.
You have the right.
Can you revoke the special permit? You know what I mean? That's a legal question. And maybe people are fine with having a protected use ADU, an ADU, and a primary dwelling unit, but.
I believe that that is the only pathway that you're actually allowed legally, is that you would have the, the single-family, potentially an existing ADU, or an ADU through the special permitting pathway, whatever, hopefully that's the same thing, but it might not be, right? Potentially. There could be an existing ADU on this, at the property, then a property owner could apply for a special permit, and then they could also come in, that they could file with the building commissioner an application for a building permit for a protected use ADU. Yes, that, that is a possible scenario.
And I think that might scare some people, like maybe.
You wouldn't be able to mitigate that, or revoke something, just to be clear, which is why we were presenting it as a policy discussion among the board.
So you're saying that if it's a special permit, you couldn't put language in there and say, is, by granting this special permit, you can't go back and just go to.
No, you would not be able to do that. That would not be allowed. The special permit is extra. You don't have to do the special permitting route. You do have to allow them by right.
Sound of staying silent more and more.
Or you, you could go with the less is more, protected use, wait for case law, and then maybe, you know, but I don't know how long that'll take. And it's like, what do you do to people who want to have an ADU that's more than 50% of the gross floor area? Say it's only 500 square feet, you're telling them they could only have a 200, you know, whatever square foot.
With a potential relief if.
So I don't know. There's no absolute right and wrong answer here.
So couldn't, I mean, that could be as simple as just saying, in Westford, you get 900 square feet regardless. Just remove the.
No, 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 oh.
I'm just saying, we could, our zoning bylaw could be as simple as saying, 900 square feet is granted for any application.
Regardless of size.
Just take the half the square footage of your house, whichever is the last part out.
We go back to just example of a carriage house.
Well, then that, I mean, I think that should go to the zoning board anyway. The carriage house is, it's probably historic, the historic commission should offer an opinion. Who's carriage house?
Jenny, my thought is that we put in the bare minimum state requirement, but do allow a special process for relief by the ZDA. I don't know if we have to outline what relief they can seek, but a relief from the, from the restrictions of the bylaw. And, you know, if there's a chance they get two, then they get two at this point. That's my thought.
Because, so question, they do still have to meet the setback.
No.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, so there is.
So if they went to ZDA, and they could get relief from zoning sideline setbacks and whatnot, but as a matter of right, they need to meet setbacks. Are they going to get relief from any other regulator, ZDA?
And what about short-term rental? I mean, I think that's something that has to be addressed.
So it's, it could be, I guess it doesn't hurt to add it in the bylaw.
Go away, didn't we do this already?
But we already have short-term rentals in there, and the only place, well, the place that it is allowed is the Summer Village Short-Term Rental Overlay District, whatever the acronym is. It also is potentially allowable in the Commercial Recreation Overlay District as an accessory use potentially through a special permit with this board. I think that's it.
Yep. So it's not as a matter of right?
No, it's basically prohibited unless you're in that Summer Village Overlay District, or it would need a special permit, I believe, through the planning board, or something under 40A, like if there's a pre-existing non-conforming use, they go to the zoning board and change it, you know? Something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts, ones?
Hope I liked your thought on that.
Jenny, can I give you direction?
I think so. So you want to go with the kind of baseline, straightforward state law requirements?
I think so.
Less is more.
Less is more, and then keep your special permitting process.
Well, this isn't a public hearing, if anybody in the audience has a thought or comment or want to listen. And we'll, we'll discuss this with the zoning board up there.
Yeah, if they have specific calls, we should consider them.
Yeah, of course. Moving right along to changes relative to ground-mounted solar panel arrays.
All right.
Before you begin.
Yes.
Jeff or Joe, the problem we're trying to solve here is, at a high level.
So.
Are we in a compliance area?
Well.
Are we going to get charged a fee for something, or are we just going to clean up and move on?
So right now, our zoning bylaw, well, it's probably all laid out in Jenny's wonderful memo, but it only explicitly regulates large-scale solar facilities.
Okay.
I will say that we have been getting more and more inquiries with the building department about citing, you know, ground-mounted solar, or smaller solar than large-scale solar, and there's been a lot of concerns, you know, from folks in town wondering, you know, what are the setback requirements? Are there setback requirements? Is it exempt? What if there's glare issues, you know?
Is there a height requirement?
Yeah, are there height requirements? So we feel, you know, it's always better to call out and be explicit and clear rather than people just doing or guessing, and so, you know, we prefer to have our bylaw be more clear than it is.
Okay.
All right. All right, so, and this bylaw is following kind of the model zoning that's provided by the state through the Department of Energy Resources. So we've used that model bylaw here and applied it, and hopefully it helps to answer some questions. Basically, this is, this is expanding upon what you currently can do by clarifying roof-mounted small and medium-scale ground-mounted solar uses being permitted as accessory uses in all districts. And that further specifies medium-scale ground-mounted solar would be subject to site plan review within residential zoning districts specifically. So it also gets to some of the, you know, potentially the comments or questions that applicants have had, or maybe property owners have had over time, about height, about how you would do site plan review, specific definitions, updates to your use table, deals with accessory use regulations, as I mentioned, and then also dimensional. and then also dimensional and density regulations to conform again with that model bylaw. So we've laid out in the text here, if you keep scrolling, amendments that are, we're proposing are underlined as red text and for additions, as additions, and then strike-through text for what we think you should remove. So with that in mind, we looked at section 3.2.3 around general accessory uses and have added a number of things to the text as noted on the screen, solar energy systems and what that means. The next section, we included the installation or replacement of those solar energy systems. So these are kind of light-touch things, but I think that they get to some of the things, some of the questions that you've been having. Under height regulations, we included the same language so that it's clearer that those would also come under that same section. Following the section, site plan review, adding the same language. And then continuing, noting medium and also large scale and specifically ground-mounted. So here's, here's a section where we added quite a bit related to solar energy systems under, this is under the section related to review standards under your section three. We added under D, if you can scroll there, just basically what it means to have site control, what an operations or maintenance plan should look like moving forward beyond installation. I think this sort of came up actually under the prior agenda item a bit. Utility notification, screening, et cetera. So these would be things that would be codified in your bylaw to make it clear to both applicants or property owners what they would need to do or provide to the board. And then if you keep going, similarly signage, addressing issues of utility connections and emergency services has also been added to this section of the bylaw or is being proposed to be added. And then in definitions, a number of additions here that are more, again, aligned with that model bylaw of the state. Nameplate capacity, solar energy system for active, interior T, ground-mounted, medium scale, adding off-grid and passive solar energy systems, and roof-mounted as well as small-scale and solar thermal. And then an update to your principal use regulations of where it needs to be allowed, which is all. Followed by an update to your dimensional and density regulations, noting small and medium-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems and how you should accommodate them in this section, and an added footnote as well. We also suggested in terms of planning board rules and regulations, which of course is separate, some other additions that you might consider to incorporate basically into, into your rules, which would basically cover all of the things that we just talked about and the documentation requirements as noted for each type of solar energy system. And leave. That is it. Happy to answer any questions.
Can we start, Mike?
Go ahead, Bob. Minor points, I noticed in the definition of medium and large-scale solar systems, there was a reference that typically medium can also be classified as a 10 to 250 kilowatt or greater rated nameplate capacity. And then I noticed for large, it's greater than 125 kilowatts. I think something did get changed there and the 125 should be 250 for the large scale.
Yeah, I think that's supposed to be 250.
So I noticed that. Other minor point, I'm going to get to a more major point later, but another minor one was we had a section 9 dot 4 dot 7 sub 2 dash 2 dash IX for signage. And I'm just going to suggest that instead of saying signs on the systems, it'd be signs for the systems, because I could see where these signs will be placed, let's say, on the building in the case of some kind of emergency on these units. You may not want the sign so close to the unit that's on fire. So I would just make in the comment that it should be signs for it and then our signage bylaw would apply to that sign regardless of where it was located with respect to the system. I also suggested that under emergency services, which was close to this, I'd just make the request that we have a soft and a hard copy of the system information be provided to emergency services such as the fire department. And I think that's pretty standard across a lot of our package these days. A little more substantial discussion I think we should have is, I noticed medium scale was permitted by RIT and residential zone RB. And that seemed, given our zone RB is, is half acre, that seemed to be pretty excessive for a 40,000 square foot system or something. But I think we need to consider what is a reasonable ground footprint for these residential districts especially, where residential A is 40,000 square feet, residential B is, I think, 20,000. So that's something that concerned me was the size of these systems with respect to the lot. And then I didn't notice in here the setback, but Joe helped me, I guess. It's kind of buried in the language. We didn't have any kind of a setback table here. But I guess setbacks is, is a conventional habit of a structure, so we should be fine.
So Bob, help me understand. You're concerned about the footprint of, of the solar array with regard to the lot, even if it meets the.
Well, I'm just saying there's a, there's a disconnect here.
Okay.
You know, I think if you were to factor in this, why are we even thinking about medium scale size? Medium-scale solar subsystems on a residential lot?
Yeah, I agree.
So I'm thinking that we need to adjust that table. I want, I don't think we should be allowing them our right. That's, I'm not even sure it's achievable.
Yeah.
Well, that's kind of what I'm pointing out, because it seems to be.
Yeah.
So also, I'll think about, we're sizing mostly by square footage. Shouldn't it be sized by, you know, the input, output, whatever it is? Because we're going to, we're going to get.
More efficient.
More efficient.
Right.
So we have two definitions.
We have two, we have two things here and right now. Yeah, I have, I just have a concern about how we've matched these up to the residential districts especially.
And I agree with Bob, I'm very concerned about 40,000 square feet for a medium system.
In a residential, in a residential lot, that's a huge, that's one, that's a one building acre.
Right.
Yeah. I want to encourage solar, but I'm not sure I'd want it doing it to that extent in a residential district on a ground, for a ground-mounted system.
And it looks like, what is, what would be the cost to even deploy something like that?
I mean, do we want to, I mean.
Can I make a suggestion? Sure. I mean, this seems like a topic that does warrant a bylaw amendment. Do we need to time it for fall meeting or do we need to have conversation about this and craft something for the March town meeting when we are informed with more information and have time to have more discussions?
Involve the Sustainability Committee in.
Yeah.
What's up?
So we don't ever want to go forward with a zoning bylaw amendment if it's not, you know, ready. We do have some folks here from Clean Energy that I'm hoping they're willing to provide, you know, some input. So why don't we kind of take that information in, see where we're at? I've already heard a few things that, you know, I might have some suggestions, but I'd love to get air.
Please, if you want to come to the table.
And last, I have one other thing that I think we should factor in here. I didn't see in here any consideration for how the system is cited on the lot with respect to other critical systems such as the onsite septic, other underground utilities. I know we had a recent system that was installed without a permit that may have been, may have been a little too tight with a Title V septic system. And I think that needs to be, at least in the language, as part of the review. This system needs to be reviewed by the appropriate other bodies such as the Board of Health. Emergency Services was in here, but just like we do with any of our site plans, it should go to all the respective bodies for their review, for safety and for safe integration interoperability of the site systems. That's it.
Thank you. Want to introduce yourselves?
Yeah, thank you. Hi, Mike Prolinski, Chair of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, and.
Beth Perkins on the same committee.
Yeah, so we appreciate town manager offers, town manager offers raising this and you reviewing this and NIMCOG's memo. We're happy to help. So, you know, we could do some discussion now or set another time and place for discussion, but we're happy to collaborate on this.
Yeah, if you want to give your initial thoughts, we'd like to hear them.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think this is great, you know, I, we appreciate, you know, reviewing this, putting forward state recommended language. I did have one general question and one very specific question. The general question was, I understand the state is updating its citing and permitting rules for energy resources. And I didn't know if that should be considered before the town revises its zoning bylaws. I'm not sure how much zoning is going to be brought up at the state level or if it's more like the permitting process for these energy systems, but I just wanted to mention that.
Good point.
And if not, okay, if no reaction, just something to consider, that, that's happening this year. And then specific, there was something, section 4.2 on height regulations. I just wanted to flag that for review. I'm just not sure it's appropriate or makes sense given the type of system a roof-mounted solar energy system is relative to all the other structures, because the first bullet, number one, says a limit in the square, in the, in the area, 20%. So I feel like some of the other structures I can understand limiting by area, but a solar system is supposed to, mounted is supposed to cover the whole roof. So I just don't know if it makes sense to limit that with something like 20%. So that was the one specific thing that I flagged that I wanted to raise. And I don't know if Beth has anything more specific.
Well, I had an issue with that same bullet because I didn't really understand it because we're talking about height and now we're talking about square footage. So it was confusing. But also the last one, I think, was four and it talked about, if you could just move the screen up a little bit.
Shall not be habitable.
Oh, no, fine. Okay, it was three. Shall be screened from public view to the maximum extent feasible in architectural characteristics, which I can understand for certain, like, ground-mounted, but this appeared to go beyond ground-mounted. So for instance, would that number three apply to a, you know, residential roof where I don't think we need to screen things? I just, I thought that section was confusing.
And I agree with you, Beth, with one caveat, and that is that there'd be no additional requirements placed upon that visibility provided that they're flush-mounted to the roof and not raised or something.
Okay.
Okay, but for the most part, the typical installations are flush-mounted, so we're good.
Well, what if it is an actual solar roof where it's the actual tiles that are roofing? Because that is an option.
Yeah, so our, our definition says it's mounted to the roof.
If I actually install a solar roof.
Or is it a roof where it is the roof?
Am I now governed by the bylaw? Am I governed by these or am I in a different class altogether? Because the tiles on my roof are the actual panels and I don't.
I don't think we have even addressed that, and that's a really good point.
You are in a different class.
Jeff?
So we will, whatever the board decides to move the conversation forward, we will want to bring our fire department into this. I know from time to time, they do have some specific concerns about solar on roof. So we just want to make sure that they're included.
Yeah.
Before we begin a public hearing.
And if you guys are willing to take a deeper dive into this, I think that'd be beneficial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. It's only take a deeper dive and maybe consider it for spring town meeting, is that?
I think that's wise.
Yeah.
Especially given the state is maybe playing out with some.
I can speak to that if you want. So for one, this section 4.2 is exactly what I was actually saying, is that it's not necessarily flush with the roof, but it would actually be a raised solar system on top of the roof. And so yes, that's how that would be relevant here. In terms of what the state is doing or proposing, which is not actually going to come into effect likely, you won't see anything until 2026 or '27, is actually for larger-scale utility systems. So I'm not sure, I still think you're not actually addressing sort of the smaller stuff, which is not, doesn't have anything to do with what the state is actually planning to do, to expedite permitting for larger-scale utility systems, which is not just solar, but it could be other types of systems as well. There is sort of like a medium-scale version of that, but I still don't think that your bylaw is in any way in conflict with what those state discussions are at this moment in time, given that I've just recently spoken with the person who's writing that new update to the state law. So I'm glad to provide more information about that. It sounds like we'll continue this conversation regardless, so maybe we can talk about that further.
Can you think of any negative reasons or negative impact if we do hold off a year, let's say, before we.
No negative impact. I mean, unless it's confusing currently to like people who are considering installing these systems or there's something else that's, you know, prompting this discussion, then I don't think there's any problem waiting till March. That's up to you.
We were just.
That's up to the town.
Trying to make progress on our sustainability.
No, I know we want to make progress. Right now, I think you said that our bylaws only cover the large, right?
They only specifically regulate the large-scale solar.
Okay.
And we are currently getting people with questions about the small stuff that's not clear to them on the outside. So we thought it aligned with, you know, some of our goals. It would be a good thing, you know, to try to update that. But it sounds like maybe we need to, you know, work towards updating it, but maybe not rush and just, you know, we'll have more information. We can bring fire department into the conversation, find out what their specific concerns are. And maybe it varies by type, you know, I have no, I have no idea. So we should get them involved.
But our current bylaws or our current process isn't going to discourage anybody in the meantime from putting a small or medium solar, ground-mounted or roof-mounted.
It's not going to discourage them, but it's also not providing clear information.
Direction.
Or what you can.
Right, right. Although the state provides pretty clear.
The bylaw addresses a lot of the visibility, the screening concerns. That's obviously a primary concern. The one thing we don't really address in here, other than say we're passing this off to fire for their consideration, are the power storage cells, and that's where some of the risk is coming. We're hearing a lot about these electric vehicle fires and battery farm issues. And that's something I think we need to consider for the neighborhood.
Yeah, but that was not considered as part of this scope with NIMCOG. That's a much bigger.
Yeah, I understand, but in the bylaw, we need to.
You're talking about the power wall thing and.
Yeah.
Does that, does that cross the line in the building? That's not building permit. No, honest question.
Well, like a hazard issue, potentially.
Yeah.
Isn't that more of a building permit question?
So this is why that topic was not included in this limited scope because it is a much bigger conversation issues. There's all kinds of things to consider in terms of, you know, like emergency responders and where things are located and what's in a building, in a garage, in, you know, so it's, it gets very complicated very quickly and so we just, it was not in the cards for this iteration. It's a much, it's an important conversation and we're going to need to deal with it at some point. We're just trying to handle a lighter.
Yeah, what we thought. Just bundle it all together and do a heavier lift and time it for March town meeting? Do the heavy lift?
I can't promise that. I think with resources, not just NIMCOG's, ours, I think that's going to take a much greater investment of time and from others.
And that may be out of our purview in general. I mean, that could be part of the electrical code, I would assume. I didn't ask the question, right, Joe?
I guess I'm not prepared to answer that question tonight. I just know it's a much heavier lift and I don't think it's, I don't think it's realistic for March.
Okay.
With everything else going.
Can I ask just Jenny one other question? The, so the definitions that you have, that 40,000 square feet that we're starting about, is that the. is that the state's definition?
It's our state definition, from the model, from the model bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah, so and also, if you scroll down to Appendix A, you can see all of the areas where you're missing information in your current bylaw.
Right.
Again, just to be clear, like, your bylaw actually does not include a number of things that are typical to your, you know, southern bylaw, so, and they are not in conflict with what the state is talking about doing. So I, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not seeing that conflict based upon knowledge that I have about what's, what's in the expedited permitting process. This, these are things that you could still do and move forward with.
You know, the lower end two, I mean, to be classified as a medium, it could also be as small as 1750.
No, it's a big range.
Yeah, so if I only have, you know, 15,000 square foot lot, I mean, there's no way I'm putting in a 40,000 square foot system. I can only put in what my lot allows me to be, so.
The setback. And what's the process now? So let's say I want to put on a ground storage, a ground solar array at my house. Is it just a site, is it just a building permit?
Potentially.
Might depend on the building commissioner at the time and how they, use category it falls under. What setbacks did you need?
And just curious, is there, how many ground-mounted solar residential projects do we have in town? I mean, how many houses have? Well, I know of one.
I can see it from here.
It's becoming more prevalent at some point, but.
Right, so I don't know how many we have. I do know that in the span of like, you know, before we approached NIMCOG, in the span of like, two weeks, there were three inquiries where people were asking what's, what's the permit, they were unclear what they could or could not do. And that's what started this, and I think before that, in the span of a year, there had been like, maybe a dozen inquiries, so it was certainly an uptick, which on the one hand is encouraging to think that people are doing that, looking for sustainability, but our bylaw is not giving them the guidance that they're looking for.
But, you know, which in the end means that they're discouraged from moving on? Like, the fact that our bylaw doesn't cover that doesn't mean that they cannot do it.
Correct. Less is more, right? If it's, we're not covering it, then they're allowed to do it.
Right, exactly. And that's the guidance they're given now.
All right, so why don't we move on? I think, well, we'll move this to March.
Sure.
We appreciate any input you guys want to.
Sorry, March Town Meeting.
March Town Meeting.
Okay, is there another time we'll meet?
Yeah, I'm sure we can do it with Jeff. If you guys get a chance to meet, go through, and then we'll talk with fire and bring it all back here.
Yeah.
August 18th.
We'll be talking about.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the site plan review process revisited.
Yes. Yeah, this is, my understanding is this is a revisit from your June 2nd meeting, where you provided feedback to Kelly Lanema, possibly Isabel, and it. And so this is intended to streamline a special, uh, special site plan review. Feels like a special permit. Reduce unnecessary delays for small projects, reinforce Westford as business-friendly community, and align the town with best practices in zoning and land use regulation. And so, again, what's happening here is the red underline is adding, and then you can see where things have been struck through. I think this is kind of going through feedback that was provided to NIMCOG staff, and so how we've reconciled that is in the, somewhere we made a recommended amendment and the explanation of the change and why we're proposing that. We can go line by line, or we can focus on the things perhaps that were sort of sticking points and follow-up from the prior meeting, which might be guided best by the chair.
I had only one question, only one section. And it was Section 9 dot 4 dot 5, and it had to do with the application for a building permit right in here.
Is this the new 9 dot 4 dot 5 or the previous?
Scrolling down, we dash two.
It would be down.
And I keep on scrolling, right here, the building permit. It had to do with that are intended to be satisfied during construction or later. And I know that in between the permit and construction, there is some pre-construction meetings, and I didn't know if there's any additional documents, Jeff, that you could think of that might be generated during that pre-construction phase. And I'm asking only because maybe we should be wording this that are intended to be satisfied following issuance of the building permit, as opposed to specifying that phase, which isn't necessarily the next phase after the issuance of a permit. Would that make any sense?
Somewhat.
I'm thinking of the pre-construction meeting phase.
All right, so not, not necessarily, I mean, we're talking about three tiers of?
I'm just trying to think about, you know.
So not everything will have a pre-construction meeting, though?
I'm just trying to think about how they have to satisfy or comply, and whether that language is sufficient.
I mean, I'll certainly think on that, but my quick-off-the-cuff is not, not every site plan review, whether it's administrative, minor, or major, actually has a pre-construction meeting?
I realize that.
And sometimes they may need a building permit for just, like, fitting up the inside space of existing, so.
It's quick and easy.
So I just want to think before adding another step or layer where we're trying to?
I'm just trying to make sure that that language, there isn't a gap in there, because we specify construction as the next phase.
So I guess I would just ask for a little leeway. We're going to look at that, and maybe we can have a little freedom for making minor edits?
That's fine.
After we look at that, when we bring it forward for the initial language?
Looked very good. I mean, I went through this in detail, looked good.
Joe, any questions?
Yeah, I actually have just three little questions. Under administrative site plan review, number one, but it's, number one is administrative site plan review. Item number eight, any plan resulting in a land disturbance of more than one acre in accordance with Chapter 147 of the Town Voice for General Bylaws, Stormwater Management. Is that what we meant? More than one acre should be less than one acre? It sounded a little weird to me, that would be just, that puts a lot of burden on administrative review.
Well, if they disturb more than an acre, they're going to need a stormwater management permit before it's any out.
Right.
So it's really.
So it didn't make a lot of sense there.
I think we were trying to align it, align it with that process, actually, which was why we put it in there that way, and use that language.
Because it was less.
But this says more.
This says more.
It says more than one acre.
That's also the tipping point for when a stormwater management permit comes into effect. So because that's, in some ways, an administrative review typically for this board, you know, with assistance from the engineering department, that's why it was put under administrative. Say, when a stormwater man, you know, if, if the only thing that's really in the board's purview was just a stormwater management permit, for instance, somebody did an A and R, and now they have two houses they're going to build, and really the only thing they're going to need is a stormwater management permit for disturbing an acre, that's really an administrative item.
Still got to go to engineering.
It's still going to be engineering, so why waste this board's time?
Okay, okay. It just looked, it says more.
Unless you want to see them all.
No, 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 that's okay. The item nine, obviously the solo one now, I don't know if that should be there or not be there now, depending what we do with the other bylaw. That's the one right below, number nine.
Yeah.
Well, that's just.
Yeah, I mean.
That's in your current bylaw. We're just adding that one sentence.
Okay, that's fine. And then my last question was Section 9, 4, 5, Procedures. Item, Paragraph B, Item III. Was one, okay, the triple I, Major Site Plan Review. As we go down, the planning board will hold a public hearing within 60 calendar days received of a complete accepted application, and shall render a decision within 150 calendar days from the date of submission of a complete application. That makes me a little nervous, because that really limits, so, I mean, example, Powers Road, that's been going on for months and months and months. So I was a little concerned, and failure for the applicant or body or its respected doesn't need to act within the required time, shall deconstructive approval. To me, that means that they can just go forward, even if we're in the middle of the process, if it's more than 150 days, and I don't think that's.
Is that state regulation?
No, this is not state regulation.
So right now?
Talk about this further.
Our site plan review says you're supposed to approve within 60 days of receiving the application. So this is?
But not the rendering of the decision with 100. Within 150 days.
Yes, the decision that I'm worried about. I don't, I'm not worried about opening the public hearing, I'm worried about rendering a decision within 150 calendar days from the submission.
That's why we're now.
Yeah.
I think that's why we keep, that's why the extensions have on.
So that's how it is now, and if we don't, if they don't grant the extension, or if we don't issue the decision, it becomes now. So we're more than doubling our time.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. It's good, Chris. I was concerned about, okay, got it.
So Keith?
Yeah.
Everything else is okay, we're fine.
There you go.
Nope, that was it.
Go on.
No, I'm good. Unless, hold on, do we need to include language about an extension? With that 150 days, do we need to make it clear that, like?
Unless extensions are granted.
Unless extensions are granted to the decision by the applicant, or is that?
Although that could mean request the planning board may grant by a majority vote an extension of the time.
There is.
Yeah, you have the option.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Well, good.
And I'm good. All right.
So would you like us to return on August 18th with something more than this?
So, yeah, I guess if we want to get it going, I mean, I think, I'm fine with this. Obviously, we've got to get it written as a proper amendment, and I don't know that these by the 18th, unless timelines dictate, do they, Jeff? I mean.
That is, it is possible. This is one of those amendments that really could have dramatic, significant changes for folks trying to do business in town. It could also incrementally free up some of your time. It could free up some of our staff time as well, but, you know, anytime there's a public hearing, it takes staff time anyhow, and there's certain administrative burdens with a public hearing process, so, I mean, it could be very favorable. This is important enough that this is one that I'd like us to try to move forward on.
That's possible, if you could have something.
Okay. So just to recap, if it's okay. So we'll return on August 18th with the AGU bylaw and with this site plan review amendments, and we will postpone, or continue the discussions, rather, on solar, and make it to a spring town meeting. And we're happy to participate in that, we'll figure out the details.
Thank you.
Jenny, thank you so much for your work.
Thanks.
Good night.
You too.
Okay, general business, Item B, PB 1923, 73 Nottingham Road, Wendell Place Request to reduce bond from $1,274,966.71 to $585,663.64. I see, Mr. Waterman.
Yeah, we've been, good evening, Matt Waterman, Land Tech Consultants. We've been working with the town engineer. Last week, we had a couple just last-minute reiterations. There's already a bond established, we're asking for reduction. They installed the curbing in the sidewalk, and I think maybe a couple other smaller items, but they're still retaining over $600,000 in there. 15% retainage is just under $400,000, so there's still plenty of money left, and as far as I'm aware, the engineering hasn't had any real big issues out there, and construction has been going.
So is the appropriate number, Joe and Mr. Waterman, another of the 17?
Is it the 602907?
It's the 602 number, so.
602.
Between the agenda was published to now, the number went up because it had to catch a finished coat of pavement on sidewalk area. So the number was adjusted to accommodate that, it went up approximately $18,000.
Yeah.
So the 602907.48 number is the correct number.
I'll move that we reduce the bond for PB 1923, 73 Nottingham Road, Wendell Place, to $602,907.48.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night. Okay, public hearings. First up, we have PB 2512, 478, Red Room Stanley Way. The applicant has requested that we continue this matter without discussion to August 18th, 2025, and this room at 7 o'clock. Your motion.
Move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to PB 2518, 14 and 6 Pleasant Street, unnamed Pleasant Street parcel to Abbott Mill Lane. This is a new public hearing.
Move that we waive the reading of the public hearing notice.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move that we open the public hearing.
Aye. Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. The members of the board, for the record, my name is John Smolak, attorney at the firm of Smolak and Bond, based in North Andover, representing the applicant. With me this evening are several members of the project team, some of whom you'll hear from this evening, including Tina Led, who's the manager-director of development, and Will Barocker, managing partner of both the Ager companies, representing the owner and the applicant. Also with us is Jim Badeski, our project architect with the architectural team, and Leslie Hildy, Karpowicz, project manager with High Point Engineering.
Great, so you want to let us know what you're looking to do?
Yeah. Yeah, sure. As we see from the materials that we've submitted to the board, the applicant is requesting to make some modifications to an existing building, it was Building 10, on the Abbott Mill campus, at 14 and 6 Pleasant Street. In addition, the applicant is looking to undertake additional improvements related to signage to create a more consistent, uniform message for signage throughout campus. And in addition, the applicant is also undertaking additional improvements that will be discussed shortly. But as, as, as part of the applicant's materials, and by way of background, I should say, I know the board is familiar with this, with the site. The project was originally developed in two phases. Phase one was constructed in 2005. Phase two was constructed in 2015, and, and in terms of the image itself, Phase one, which you see in the foreground, is Pleasant Street, which is to the west, and to the left of the slide is the rail, the set of railroad tracks, and Phase one follows along the railroad tracks, along the buildings 4, 5, and 10. And so Phase one is a little over seven acres in size, consists of approximately 10 buildings, containing a total of 131 residential units, along with 4,000 square feet of approved office space within Building 10, which is the building that's circled in red. East or behind Phase one is Phase two, as shown in that area of Buildings 9, 11, 12, and 15, consisting of approximately 5.7 acres. And Phase two is, again, concentrated within those four buildings, four mill buildings, which were redeveloped into 102 residential units, and that property is known as Number 2 Abbott Mill Lane. And further to the east of Phase two is, at the top of the slide, is the Bill Works in that area. And so, as noted in the staff memo, the project, combined project, was originally issued approvals under the mill conversion, overlay district, site plan approval. A Waste to Our Treatment Plan was approved under the Water Resources Protection, overlay district, unless the signed special permit was issued for Phase one. And this evening, we're requesting the board's approval to modify those approvals based on the approvals that we're going to introduce you to tonight. And so with that, so I'd like to turn the discussion over to Tina Led.
Sure, so as John described, we're going to be talking about primarily Building 10 and the signage in terms of site plan approval requests. Building 10 is currently Building 10 is currently, as you can see in the red, that's our subject building, it is currently a facility used for resident storage, our leasing and management office and parking, and then above those two levels is effectively some amenities and office spaces. And so what we are looking to do for Building 10 is do an interior renovation in where we would add seven units in total, six of them would be replacing the offices and amenity space on Level 3, one of them is replacing an office that's sort of an appendage on the ground floor, so it's about half of the square footage of Building 10 will be affected, it's about a 19,000 square foot building, the revisions would be about 8,000 square feet of that building itself. And before we move on from this slide, I just want to point out that as you, I'm sure you're all familiar with Abbott Mill, it's many buildings, and we have clusters of buildings, and we have individual buildings, and they all have various numbers, so as part of the request today, we want to talk about signage, where we're looking to create better wayfinding around the site. We've also gone through the exercise of sort of naming these cluster, clusters of buildings so that we can better identify what each building is and where people live, for example, if you're at 25371B1A, you're living at the Lark, but we're not dropping the numbers entirely because we know that that's relevant for the fire department and also the apartment numbers themselves. So that's part of the sort of signage discussion that we'll, we'll have, but I just wanted to point out that characteristic about the site before we move on. And so if we move on, so this is an image of Building 10, as you can see, there is this like sort of appendage on the right-hand side of the building, that's part of the ground floor, that's currently an office space, it was previously used as an office for the previous owner, Chris Yule, and to the, above that level is the management and leasing office and garage, and then above that is the subject area where we would like to renovate into six apartments. So if you continue to move down, this is just a very quick summary, I want to be mindful of time so I can get straight to the point, but what this shows is the third level of the building, and where we'll have six apartments, three two-bedrooms, two studios, one one-bedroom, and then again, that appendage would be converted into a one-bedroom apartment. And looking at the elevations I've just highlighted, I've kind of circled the areas of the building that are being affected in elevation, so that you can see it's about half of the building. I do want to note that there are seven units, that's in addition to the 233 on-site, so there's 240 in total, once this is completed. Again, this is just a site plan showing Building 10 up in the corner, so we can keep moving from there. And just to give some orientation of the site, this is the first level, the existing storage facility is unaffected, just the office space to the right, if you go to the next page, Joe, thank you. This is the management and leasing level, we will be doing minor modifications to this level, where we're adding a bathroom, we're increasing the package room, there is a package room at this location that serves the entire community, so we have that adjacent to the management and leasing office, and then we're, it has, it maintains the garage that's in place. And then finally, the most affected floor is the third floor here, and we're taking the space and entirely renovating it into multiple apartments.
They're keeping, I'm sorry, they're keeping the storage area?
Yeah, so the first floor is largely unaffected, the second floor is mostly unaffected, and then the third floor is entirely affected. And then here, I just wanted to point out, and we are proposing, like closing in some of the openings with brick, you can, I just wanted to point out where those are, they're against the back, two of them are not even windows, one of them is a window, but it is facing the MTBA line right behind it, so I wanted to be, I just wanted to point out what that is and what it looks like from a, you know, the perspective of the outside.
You say MBTA? It's a freight mark.
Or, sorry, the freight, not the MBTA, but the railroad.
It's worse.
I just, I wish. Anyway, so, before, I don't know if we want to field any questions now, but I can move straight to the signage. The signage itself, the questions that, there are effectively three requests that we're making. The first is that there are existing ground floor, or small ground signs on-site, these signs are being used for wayfinding, they currently are about just under five square feet in size, the bylaws for the signs show a maximum of six square feet, we are asking to increase these signs to eight square feet. The reason we're asking for this request is because, as you know, the property has many buildings, and we would like to improve wayfinding and navigation around the site, and in doing so, you know, there's quite a bit to include, so that's the reason for that request. The second request is adding a fourth small ground sign, this small ground sign would be a map of the site upon arrival to the site itself, and we're requesting 10 square feet for that sign because of the amount of content on that sign, so it's visible to vehicles. And the last request is quite a small request, but we're just asking to add an additional small wall sign to Building 10 in particular, so that we can show both the building identification and also the leasing of packages, so that it's very clear where the leasing and packages exist. So those are the requests for approval, and then this is just a little bit more information on where those small ground signs exist, what we're proposing versus what is existing today. The number four in blue on the site plan is the new small ground sign that we're proposing, or I should say maybe medium ground sign of the site map, and then the other three are existing. And then if we go to the next page, it just shows kind of the character of those signs, and that's pretty consistent throughout. The proposed site map that we're showing, and, and then this is the request for the two small wall signs to replace the one small wall sign on Building 10. And then I just wanted to also include as an FYI, what we're looking to do from a wayfinding perspective across the site, we're just hoping to create uniformity throughout the site, so while, you know, this, this isn't necessarily a request, we want to show how we will be improving the signage, so we'll be updating the monument sign, it's actually a smaller footprint than what exists, but it's in character with the remaining signage that we're proposing. And then overall, we're looking to add, modify this no through-traffic sign at the Millworks because we find that there's always many people that are kind of flying through the site, we want to avoid that. And then finally, the building signs today are very irregular and not consistent, we really want to create some uniformity throughout the signage, and so we're proposing just the exact same, like, way of locating the buildings throughout by adding these uniform signs throughout the buildings. So, that in short are the two main requests that we're discussing, and I wanted to keep the presentation short itself, but there's also a few other things that we can discuss regarding our requests and what we are moving through as we're creating these improvements, one of which is, we are working through today adding 10 of our affordable units to the subsidized inclusionary housing list. This is something that was not completed under former ownership, and we are looking to complete that exercise. These are 10 units in our Phase 2 in perpetuity, we would also be looking to add an additional unit, given we're proposing seven more units on-site. So those are two things that we're working towards. Our expectation is to submit an LAU application upon hopeful approval of these plans, so that we can include that additional unit as well. So that's something that we're working towards, and then we're also working towards additional site improvements that are really deferred maintenance-related. We had already done, you know, minor site improvements around the site, one of the improvements that was included in the site planning application is a, you know, paving over some damaged concrete and adding some more lush landscaping, so that's something that we're also exploring, we can certainly discuss, we have some material to share, if that's something we want to get further into. But with that, I wanted to keep it short, so we can open for discussion.
Great, well, again, if there's more that we need to consider, certainly, you know, take the time now and talk about it, I think, Mr.?
Parking?
Oh, parking, yes, thank you for your...
I do want to, I do want to mention though, the applicant, you know, was very cooperative, they asked what might, you know, either this board or their town look to see as a benefit. We did point out that while there are affordable units in fact, they don't count on our SHI, so for those that don't know, the Phase 1 affordable housing units, that's not in perpetuity. So there's a restriction, it would, after 30 years, which, but we're 10 years away now probably, they will go, and while the Phase 2 units are in perpetuity, they will never count on the SHI, so they have volunteered and would accept as a condition of approval, correct if I'm wrong, that if the board grants an approval, they would take that as a condition of approval. I do want to be upfront though, because there is process involved with that, the units do not immediately get added to the SHI, it would be as they turn over and go through the proper marketing and other processes, they all eventually would become on the SHI permanently, but it's not an immediate thing, but it is time and expense and process to do that, so I just want to, you know, commend the applicant for willing to do that. I do think parking is the last substantive issue, there's some minor administrative stuff relative, you know, to some other decisions that really aren't that pertinent for tonight, I'd say.
Yeah, I can, I can speak a little bit to parking, so, we had done an in-house audit of our parking, we also had a third-party engineer take a look, and, and we can certainly include this in our materials for, if we continue this conversation, but upon this, this study, they observed of the 463 parking spaces at peak time, 318 were occupied, which is really a maximum occupancy rate of about 1.45. This is below the MTBA overlay, it's also below the ITE maximum standard, so their recommendation through this memo was upon losing up to four parking spaces, I say up to four because we do need to lose a couple of parking spaces for the renovations in Building 10 to accommodate some mechanical areas. We're also, we're also looking to improve the accessibility of the parking in front of the leasing office, but even with those four removed, they find that it is more than adequately parked, or there are more than adequate spaces, so I did want to bring that into discussion as well. The parking ratio in general would be about 1.9, just under 2, if there were no, you know, modifications.
And if, and if we looked under, by comparison, the MBTA communities bylaw that you adopted, that would be, that would be around 1.5 plus one space per 10 units for guest space, and that roughly comes out to about 1.6 spaces per unit, and we're at 1.9. And again, I, we understand MBTA, why in the circumstance, but that's probably the most closely analogous part of the standard that you have under your bylaw, and, and as Tina had indicated, we had looked at the parking analysis three separate ways, and we find that even at peak period, and with, it's not with 90% leased up, that we have anywhere from 70, 50 to 70 to 100 excess spaces during the peak period, so we feel there's more than adequate parking for the, for Abbott Mill.
Right, I'm on the board, Bob, any thoughts, questions?
No, the only issue on the parking, and they kind of addressed it with the signage, and my real question here is, have you had any issues with the parking overflow from your budding property, the Millworks, because we know they have significant parking challenges.
Yes, we understand that, and we have, we have done, we don't seem to have issues because we're not really over capacity, so in terms of what our residents are able to access, we have been adequately, we have adequate parking, especially in our garages, which seem to get less parking than the exterior, I think just by ease, but we have, you know, done, made some improvements to try to separate the Millworks a little bit, just visually, we added some plantings to, we can't add an actual gate unfortunately, we did talk to the fire department about that, but part of that signage is to hope, is in hope of making that more visible, that this area is for residents only.
Yeah, no, it looks good.
Yeah, really?
Just one thing, I was really happy to see the willingness to get units on the SHI, of course, and right now, Phase 2 has five at 50%, less than 50%, and five at 50 to 80, so, and the one you're going to add is also going to be a 50 to 80%, is that correct?
That's what we're looking to do.
He's doing it too bad.
Uh, yes.
Yes, perfect, yeah, no, I, I think that's really great, and I know the locals will be very happy with that.
No major concerns, I think the signage looks great, actually, what was the, what was the reason given for not being able to gate that, is that because of the second units of the address from the site?
So that was, I think, related to prior approvals where fire department really needed for their purposes to have access for emergency purpose to go through the Abbott Mill, Phases 1 and 2, and to the Millworks. So, and I think there are even some legal, maybe some easements of such, but that was something that was in prior approvals, based on fire department.
Specifically for the fire department, not for general use of the public?
I, I believe that was the case, where they needed fire trucks to get to that site.
I just seem to remember in Spalding Hill, there's a, there's a road down, there's a backside road, and I remember asking the question at the time, like, if that road isn't needed, and I think the answer I was given is...
Excellent, do you get people ready?
Well, no, those gates won't...
Stop the fire truck.
Well, aren't going to stop a fire truck that wants to get through the gates, you know, they're not, they're not that hard.
I mean, if we're able to put a gate there, I would love to, yeah.
I'm just always...
I'm totally open to it.
If you would like us to reach out to the fire department specifically about this, again, we're happy to do that. I can just appreciate as, as an occasional user of the Millworks, and not necessarily during the peak times, how that could be potentially negatively impactful to the parking situation at Abbott Mill, but in general, I have no concerns, so, thank you.
Good to hear.
No, it's great, actually, it's refreshing to see clear wayfinding signs as part of the site, which is nice, so.
They're doing a great job over there, so.
I think it's a net positive.
This is a public hearing, any comment from the audience? Please come up, give your name and address.
My name is Alice, and I live on Pond Street, and I'm concerned about the parking, so, well, you've clarified something, because in the letter that we got from...
I mean, if you could just make your comments for the board, and we'll...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, fine, yep.
In the certified letter that we received, it had mentioned the 400, we would have lost 31 parking spots, or you would have lost, and then now it's been clarified that it's only four spots, because there were two different sets of numbers that we had received.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that, and John, you can also help. So, the original decisions back in 2005 and 2015 collectively added up to the number that you're referring to, but the actual parking on-site is 463 spaces, rather than the 490 that was, that was shown, so we, we wanted to be consistent with the original decisions and what we wrote in the, in the publication.
Okay, and one of the other things was, I had, they had the numbers of the cars that were parked on June 3rd, and the times were 6:00 AM, 9:00 AM, and 4:00 PM. And I found that 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM, people are at work, they're not going to be parked there, because I had gone and done, this is on Pleasant Street, the, the big parking, so I did some counts several days, and some of my numbers, the parking lot was full several times in the morning, like at 5:00 AM, and also like at 9:30 PM or something.
Well, we haven't seen that study yet, I think it just got added.
Yeah, that did just get added.
Yeah, so, we'll certainly, we're going to continue this hearing, and we can certainly take a look at that as well.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and feel free to come back to the next hearing, we'll, we'll take a look, and if we have some questions on that, we'll certainly bring that up.
And to help alleviate that concern too, a lot of our parking is actually underground in the garages, so that's where we find most of our vacancy during peak hours.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience? When, are we planning on coming back for this one? Do you want to...
August 18th.
August 18th, winner, winner. All right, should we direct staff to start working on decisions for this, I think it's going to be someone involved with the multiple pages and... Yep. Is that reasonable?
I think that's a good idea.
Do you think the 18th is soon enough for you?
For us?
For the staff.
Is it soon enough? Yes. Yeah, it...
Do you want?
I think we can, we should at least start, because there are a lot of pieces, I didn't hear any concerns about signage, there might be some, some questions about parking, but there are a lot of things, I think it would benefit us to start putting together, you know, some of the, the draft language, where it might help you, you know, make your decisions.
All right, then, what's that?
Sorry.
I'm sorry?
If we could just mention one of the items that we didn't cover, it is in the materials, but we had also requested administrative approval for the modification of the...
Right.
District plan. There was a special permit granted...
There was a special permit granted because there is a wastewater treatment facility of a certain capacity in the Zone 2, the Water Resource Protection Oblee District. They actually do not need to, they've already been to DEP. They do not need to amend that with DEP. It's approved for a certain design flow. And even by adding these seven units, they're still well within that design flow. However, evil staff here suggested that if this planning board were to approve this project, there would now be other decisions of record that reference a certain number of units and certain improvements that would then be inconsistent with the special permit of record that will be in conflict. It will be off by a certain number of units and such. So we think it's in everyone's best interest, if the board makes those approvals, that you also sort of allow an administrative update to that special permit just to bring it into consistency with whatever this board approves. So there's not differing, you know, decisions of record, the same property. There's a few other minor things, but we would bring that out in draft decisions for you.
I would anticipate that you'd do that.
Thank you.
Any questions on that, Bob?
No. We continue PB 2518 for 1, 4, and 6 Pleasant Street, and unnumbered Pleasant Street, Thompson, and 2 Abbott Mill Lane to the planning board meeting of August 18th, which will start at 6:00 PM here in meeting 201.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll take a three-minute break. Yeah, right. Get to thinking.
Yes. Have a good night.
To a new site, which will be their own site here on our Carl Thompson. So in order to do this, as we've applied and as town staff was kind enough to help us with, we are in need of three approvals. One is a special permit. The building inspector has concluded that our storage of the fence panels outside constitutes contractor's yard, although again, we will be pretty much limited to one thing. The fence panels, we don't have material, any other materials, you know, like dirt or pipes or things that you might see in a typical contractor's yard. So we need the special permit for the contractor's yard. We need site plan review because we're a non-residential commercial activity. And then we do need a stormwater permit because we're disturbing greater than one acre. We are of the mindset, and I'm going to let Matt give you an overview of the site and the proposed, but I just wanted to come out and give you a little information on our understanding of how this proposal will affect the site and certainly as compared to what's been previously approved. We believe this use is far less disruptive, not only to the site, but to the neighborhood itself. It's far less intense than what neighbors would have seen had a 25,000 square foot building and 100 parking spaces being put on this site. First of all, we are, with respect to construction, impervious service significantly less than what's been approved. We're not building a new building. We may be upgrading the driveway, but as you can see, we are going to have far less impervious surface here with the, using the existing building and upgrading the parking. The remainder of the site where we're going to have storage will be gravel area, so it will be pervious in that regard. So far less stormwater management than associated with the original approvals.
Doug, I'm very confused here. You keep on saying you're keeping the existing building.
Yes.
And page nine of the stormwater pollution prevention plan says you're raising the building.
That most likely is a typo. I don't have the stormwater pollution prevention plan in front of me, but the site plan and all the plans depict the existing building remaining and redeveloping the site.
I'm sorry, yeah, 528 of the packet.
We could certainly correct. Oh, that was the stormwater pollution. Bob, you read everything.
Huh?
I said, you read everything in the packet.
Well, because I was confused.
No, and so...
I was trying to understand what you were doing, and I saw you keeping the building, and then I came to this, and I was scanning it, and I said, wait a minute.
And that was a typo. So this was, what we're required to do is provide a draft stormwater pollution prevention plan as part of the site plan approval for the stormwater management permit, and that was an oversight when we were updating it. I know we went through and updated names and kind of new quality fence at the top, obviously.
Yeah.
But we've got some work to make sure that the description of the site is accurate. That is a typo.
Okay, so you're keeping the existing building, no new building.
Absolutely. No new building, construction. Other than two temporary areas that Matt will talk about.
That's fine.
No, we are definitely keeping that existing building. So just to talk a little bit about traffic generation. As I said, there are no retail sales here. In fact, my client says that people don't come to the site to rent or buy or, you know, everything is done over the phone and the computer. So we don't entertain clients or retail clients in any way, shape, or form. So the only traffic that's generated is by the employees coming and going from the facility, and I want to give you some details on that. So the busiest time for this business is in the summer. Makes sense. During the summer, there are between six and eight employees who are essentially the, you know, responsible for installing, deinstalling, delivering, picking up fencing. So we have every day, in addition to four office employees, and that's a year-round count. They have four office employees year-round. In addition to those four employee, office employees, we have six to eight laborers who come in. They do start early. They're generally, including office staff, generally starts around 6:00 a.m. We'll have the four, some of the employees will come in, office employees, but most of the laborers, the six to eight folks that come in for the fence work, they're definitely in by 6:00 o'clock. So we're looking at approximately maximum 12 employees coming to work, and if they have their, each have an own vehicle, we could be looking at up to 12 vehicles. During the fall/winter months, the number of in-house employees doesn't change, it's still four, but the actual worker bees goes down to two or three during the winter months. So I want to talk worst-case scenario. Worst-case scenario is 12.
What about material supply trucks?
Okay. What happens is those, everyone comes into the office in the morning. My client has eight trucks, eight pickup trucks. They range in size from your typical F-150. They do have some larger F-550s, but they're all essentially pickup trucks. We're not talking commercial dumps or truck double axle or anything like that. They're all of a, you know, pickup truck, larger or smaller style. He also has four trailers that they put the fencing on to take them various places. Now, those trailers are not your 40-foot tractor trailers. They're 20-foot trailers that attach to the pickup trucks. So the employees will come in. There may be some movement of fencing onto the trailers, but eventually those employees leave with the, up to eight pickup trucks, and they leave for the day. And they'll, you know, they'll probably get out of the site around 7:00 or so by the time they get in and make sure everything's loaded up, and they head out and they go off.
They take material out. How does material get in?
We get, in the summer months, we will get no more than one weekly delivery of fencing material, once a week. And it's a tractor trailer truck comes in.
That's the team, once a week.
Once a week. But that's only during peak season.
I understand.
You know, they said that in the winter, you may not get any deliveries because they have the materials, it's not being moved as much, so.
Right.
But that is, that is, max would be once a week during the summer period, and that truck delivery, actually, I know company, I know the timing, that deliveries are usually between 8:00 and 3:00 when the truck comes, once a week. So that's it. So again, you know, 12 people come in, worst-case scenario, eight will leave for the day, eight come back in the afternoon. Depending on the season, it's generally, you know, 3:30, 4:00 during the peak summer, they may be out as late as 6:00 or 6:30, but nothing beyond 6:30. They do operate five days a week, Monday through Friday. They don't have any scheduled weekend work. They don't work on weekends. My client has said it is very rare, you know, for anything to happen at the site during the weekends. Maybe an office staff may go in if they have something to do. But again, as far as movement of fences and that stuff, they do not work, they do not do that on weekends. It's a Monday through Friday. So that's our traffic. We're really pretty quiet, not a lot of people. And like I say, worst-case scenario, 12 in, eight leave, eight back, and then 12 leave. So, and again, we're pretty much shut up and closed up by 7:00 o'clock and not open on weekends. Parking, we have proposed, and I know we did review the staff memo, said that although we've used general use for our parking, that the board is going to want to consider it. So we wanted to give you some information on our parking. We're currently showing 10 spaces along the front of the building, and then you can see there's 10 more off to the, to the right there. Yep, right in there. And you can see that those are front and back spaces because what we assumed is that would be a great place for the trailers. You know, we could store our four trailers there, and our pickups can be in front of them. So there's, you know, 10 spots between trailers and trucks there. Then we have another 10 over in front of the building, four of which we would expect to be taken up by our employees, and that'll still leave us six more for an additional pickup. You know, if we can't get the eight trucks and the four trailers over there in those 10 spots, we have more than enough in front of the building. Although Matt and I did talk about, in light of staff's memo, as you can see, we have a significant amount of space on the site and in fact, could potentially put a couple of, any number of, you know, longer spaces over to the left side of the building there where those two, those two storage areas are. Yeah, right in there. So we, you know, if the board thinks we need more traffic, parking, we have plenty of space. It's just that, you know, given my client's long history and knowledge of what he needs, we didn't seem we wanted to pave anything more than we really had to. But we are flexible if the board feels we should have additional spaces for parking laid out. Lighting, pretty simple. We do have three yard lights, you know, exterior lights. Those will all be off and shut down by 8:00, 8:00 p.m. I'll be at the latest, probably earlier, but we could, just for safety's sake, set the shut-offs for 8:00 p.m. We would like to be able to keep a couple of the wall-mounted, you know, lights on at night, just for safety. But as you know, those wall-mounted packs aim down, and you know, they're not going to create any glare or lighting that'll have any impact on our butters or neighbors. So minimal lighting.
So the side of the building would be strictly on the side facing down?
Matt?
Right.
Yeah, currently, we have the lighting just on the front of the building. Just on the front there.
With the wall packs.
Okay.
And the wall packs. So if you expand out, you kind of see that if you drew a line straight from the building, we don't, we don't aim at anybody. There we go. At least not for quite a ways. I guess I want to talk a little bit about noise, because I'm sure our butters are concerned about, although we'll only be operating during day hours generally, well, we'll be acting during the day, you know, what kind of noise are we going to generate? And the only noise that we're going to generate is that there is a bobcat machine with a set of prongs that lifts up packages of the fencing. You know, fencing's piled packages. So the bobcat goes in, picks it up, brings it over, and puts it down on the trailer. It's a pretty low noise, low...
So no fabrication of posts?
No fabrication of fencing whatsoever on the site. We will do some minor repair work, you know, like if the chain link gets ripped off of a frame, we can repair that frame. We can put a new piece of chain link on. But no manufacturing, no fabrication whatsoever, just minor, you know, maintenance if, you know, something comes in bent or fixed, wrecked, we can fix it. Also, no maintenance of vehicles of any type. All of the vehicles are sent offsite, you know, for maintenance at garages or, you know, facilities for maintenance. So we're not proposing any maintenance whatsoever of vehicles on the site, no manufacturing. Other than the bobcat and the movement of the fencing, again, there's no proposed activity outside that would generate any noise that would be problematic or impactful to the neighbors. So I just kind of wanted to give you a little understanding of the operation so that as Matt explains to you the, you know, the proposed site layout, you can imagine where things are happening and how they're happening. But as you can see, you know, we're really not doing a lot on the site in terms of buildings or construction. We've far reduced the impervious surface from the previously approved project. And the last thing I'd like to say is, I know that when the board reviewed the previous project, as usual, you were very concerned that the neighbors were protected, and I know that the proponent of that project proposed buffer zones and fencing and landscaping, especially, you know, in the direction of the residential neighbors as you see it. We have not only maintained everything that you asked for, but we've improved it. You'll see, we have significantly improved the vegetation and the height of the berm as it goes around the left side of the site. We've also beefed up some of the landscaping on the right side of the site to our closest neighbor. We've pulled things back. We've pulled the area of disturbance out of the buffer zone. We're no longer in the buffer zone with anything and therefore don't even, we do not have to go to conservation for any permits. But again, by pulling that work out of the buffer zone area, we've created an increased natural buffer, but also have, are still proposing our berm and the fencing that you wanted with the original approval. So I'll let Matt give you a little more detail on that, but as you can see, you know, we're now buffering all around that left side, around the turn and along the top. That's all fencing and landscaping, and so again, I think we've acted to not only reduce the activity on the site, reduce the construction on the site, but also have enhanced protection of our neighbors so that we're not problematic. So I guess with that, I'll let Matt give you the details of the engineering.
Have you met with the neighbors?
No.
Okay.
No, but we were cognizant of your previous...
Yeah.
And so we're well aware of what their concerns were, which is why we didn't touch anything that you approved, but only made it better.
Matt?
Thank you. And again, and just to kind of go through some of the highlights that Doug went through, it is a redevelopment of the existing building. The footprint of the building is roughly 2,500 square feet, little under, and then it's an existing fraternal organization on the assessor card. I think it was once used as a recording studio. I don't know the history of this property that well, but that's what I've been told. And then on the second floor, there was a two-bedroom apartment that was about half the size of the first floor. They're going to redevelop that existing building into just office space for the new quality fence. As Doug said, we're providing up to 20 parking spaces. We may end up putting five or six off to the left so that they don't have to jockey cars around so when the crews come in in the morning, they can park their cars, walk to their trucks, load up, and leave. Access drive, it is widened to 20 feet. It's in the exact location of the current drive. It's just kind of to newer standard, firetruck access and turnaround. Gravel storage area is roughly two acres. I know there was question of open space calculations, which is independent of percent We typically, usually that calculation is impervious area. They're very similar, but I understand where staff had, kind of where this is kind of an active gravel storage area to kind of subtract that out of the open space and make sure we're in conformance with the zoning by law. And we're still, well, they're required, and we can update the site plan, of course. We are required by right up to, required to have 54,000 square feet of open space, and we're in excess of 100,000. It doesn't look like it because the gravel space kind of occupies the majority of the center of the project, but, and I double, double-checked when you add in all of the buffer zones and the wetland areas and the areas up front and around, it's well over 100,000 square feet of open space that will not be gravel or parking or pavement. I know there was also a question of the temporary shelter. What they are is they're kind of box storage trailers that are lockable, and then there's a canopy that goes over them. It is our intent that these are temporarily similar to a greenhouse. They can be broken down in a day. The trailers can be moved. And I know Joe is scrolling, here's one here with the blue containers. And like Doug said, that's just for when they're doing minor repairs to some of the existing fencing. It gives them a little bit of a shelter to store their bobcat. And they're temporary in nature in the sense that they can be broken down fairly quickly. Stormwater, Joe, if you go back to the original plan, is significantly simplified from the previously approved plan. It's more of an open drainage, there's no closed drainage. There's two primary infiltration basins that will take the runoff from both the driveway and the gravel storage area. Staff had a good recommendation to kind of provide some barriers along infiltration basin one. We can certainly do that. There'll be either some concrete blocks or jersey barriers or fence to kind of protect that infiltration basin number one that kind of sits inside that gravel storage area. But when you pull in to the site from Carl Thompson Way, it's all grassed out front. It's formal landscaping, there's a sign, there's pavement. So we really tried to enhance that view from the Carl Thompson Road, and then when you come in, you'll see a fence off to your left, and then you'll come down the access road, there'll be a fence on your left as well. And then there'll be a gate that will work with the fire department so they have access. But that gate will be a slide gate, and they'll be able to enter the facility and that whole area, that gravel storage area is fenced in 100%. As Doug said, we really tried to work within the parameters of the previously approved kind of limits of work, specifically to the plan southeast. We did pull everything out of the 100-foot wetland buffer, and then we enhanced the plantings in the berm kind of along the Westerly, the, which is Plan West when you're looking at this plan. And I think, and one of our discussions also was that there isn't a butter to the north that was at a lot of the meetings for the previous approvals. And I think having that existing building and keeping a lot of that work on this side of the building is different than what was previously approved, and that I think it helps to buffer that residential structure to Plan North or the, to the residence to the, as you're looking at our plan, to the north. Landscaping, again, it's natural buffers, enhancing natural buffers. Fencing, the berm, it's 20 feet wide, 12 feet tall with plantings on top of it. No work within the 100-foot buffer and well underneath the percent impervious requirements for the warp pod, about seven and a half percent with the majority of that just widening the access road. I think it's 16 feet wide currently, 12 to 16, it varies, and then it would be 20 feet wide. We would certainly work with fire to make sure that there's, with their deliveries, they have to maintain an access loop so they can get their truck out of there, that weekly truck that comes through. So obviously, we'd be maintaining that at all times for fire and emergency vehicles and don't have any issues with making sure that that is maintained. And I think that's it. The only other thing is the trailers, when they do leave the site, it's not like landscape trailers that, I'm sure all of you have heard, that have like the equipment that kind of bounces. These guys strap their stuff down hard. It's fencing, it's expensive fencing, and so they are, everything is strapped down tight. Their trailers don't rattle nearly as much as landscape trailers. And so I think that's just one important thing I wanted to add to the discussion.
But they're open trailers, correct?
Yeah, open flatbed trailers.
Yeah, basically, yeah.
20-foot.
But they're strapped down and everything's secured, so it's a much quieter process. And that's all I have.
And I, just to finish up, and you know, I think this is a testament to the fact of how they operate and what they move and whatnot. They have been operating, you know, for some 10 years across the street from a residential development that I permitted as well, you know, and they've had residential neighbors across the street there for years. Their trucks come right out, and yet, no problems. No complaints, no issues. The neighbors have been great. So it really is a pretty low-key activity.
Thank you. We'll go to the board, then we'll go to the audience. Bob?
Nothing further than what I've asked so far. Kind of listen to the audience.
Only one question on the gravel storage areas, because I didn't see a section. Are you just going to like click cut everything, or are you going to put in some compacted gravel, or what's the intent?
It all gets gravelled and leveled for drainage purposes. Everything sheet flows to the grass swale. There's two grass swales, one along the access road and one along the left-hand side of the site. So everything sheet flows to those swales, and then it goes to the infiltration basin. So there is the, it's hard to see the grading on the plan, but there is a grading, so it's all kind of cleared, leveled, and then gravelled.
Okay. And what about, no concern about dust? You know, raising dust, you know, with the, you know, trailers moving on to the gravel areas?
And I defer to Sean. I don't know, Sean, do you do dust control at all if there's ever an issue, or?
No, and there's not that much movement. Dust can't compete, you know, at a ton of dust, no. So we're not worried about dust.
Okay, okay. And then the parking, you said you're going to add extra parking for your, for the six or eight people who come in?
Yeah, six, I think roughly. I mean, we defer to the board, but we certainly can add them to the left of those canopy shelters was our first thought.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Dylan?
Did I miss the truck sweep-up analysis? Was that in the packet? Like how, because do I understand it's, do I understand it's going to go over the gravel area for the trucks?
Yep.
Okay, so can we just kind of see that as part of the circulation flow on the next draft? I mean, I just, oh, so they're going to go out beyond the parking lot and then K-turn and come back around?
Yeah, be kind of a counterclockwise maneuver.
Okay.
They would come in and sweep.
So they're not sweeping over the main, more sort of like area along the roadway? They're going out the, out the other side of the parking lot, essentially, as it's today? K-turning and then coming back?
So we can just show that turnaround off the end of the parking lot?
Yeah, I think we did have.
Yeah, totally. I see it now. Okay. I mean, I'll wait for it here. Thanks.
So certainly, it's a smaller footprint than the other proposed building that was already approved, certainly. I guess gravel storage, is that just graded gravel? It's not piles of gravel waiting to be taken out of sight and everything?
No, it's just gravel surface.
Right.
That you can drive on.
Okay. So you can basically drive bobcat around it and store it in front of the lot?
Correct.
Now, in terms of outdoor storage of the fencing itself, we have racks, you know, to store the fencing materials on, the fence sections, or is it just all on the ground or like?
I think they're on pallets, is that correct?
It's on the ground.
If you could, I'm just speaking on my gram, just so it's captured for the TV.
The fence panels are put on the ground, and they're stacked, just a couple of them. So not on pallets, not on racks.
Like a re-tier rack or anything like that?
No, no, it's just right on the ground.
Right. So I was just curious about height there. That's better, right.
What's the maximum height, Sean, of any of those piles?
They're probably eight feet. Yeah, six to eight feet.
All right. Yeah, I'm just trying to envision what that yard is.
If you got a minute, I'd, you know, take a ride by, dump, make peace, you'll see them piled in nice rows.
So presumably, that's what the gravel storage area is for, it's stacked upstairs?
Yeah. They've done a video online showing the existing operation with them in it. So there's not a, I, no, there's no plan for like a future garage or something to store all that stuff inside or anything? Okay. So I think lower, smaller footprint. So I like it.
I'll open it to the audience. Please go upstate your name and address, comments, questions, concerns. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Daniela Batizato, 38 Forest Road. Appreciate the change project, and I have a few questions. How this is going to change from the outlook? If it's going to be just a building that's already there, how's it going to look like? There is no image here. We had an image before of the project, but now I can't visualize how this is going to change. First question. Second question is, those trucks are going to beep in every time they are going to back up. It's going to be a constant beep in every time they work regarding the noise. And the third question, how's it going to change? The trees are going to stay on the southern part, you know, I think that part is the part that is close to the butters, and you're not going to touch. Is that what you said? I'm not sure. So that, well, my question was, is going to, the trees are going to stay there, or how much is going to change landscaping?
So I'll let them answer for sure, but I think we see these quickly lines are the current trees, and then the darker ones are added trees.
Oh, those are entries.
Is that correct?
Correct, which was consistent with what was previously approved. We maintained that kind of limited work or made it smaller, and then we...
And then where we did get close to the property lines, we do have a 20-foot berm that's four feet tall, and then it has evergreens planted on top of it, and it has a fence on top of the berm. So, there's kind of three levels of screening and buffering that are provided along that one area to buffer the activities from the industrial to the residential side.
And so, are there other questions? Do you have a rendering of what the building will look like at this point?
We do not. We could take a picture of the existing building. We're not proposing to change the building.
It's going to be the way it is.
It is the way it is today.
Okay.
I mean, maybe they'll paint it.
It's on the property card.
Paint it. Hopefully, paint it.
Yeah, they'll probably paint it, but we're not physically changing the building.
There are no more buildings to be added.
No buildings added?
Okay, thank you.
And for the beeping?
Oh, for the beeping, yes.
So, with the proposed hours of operations, I mean, I'm assuming that bobcat beeps.
Yeah, they're going to be, yeah, that's the building.
There's the building.
Beautiful building. Maybe we'll make it a little prettier, but we're not changing it. Sean, I'm sorry to bother you again. Do those, do the pickup trucks have reverse beeping?
No, there is no beeping. And the trucks are in the yard for about a half an hour in the morning and at the end of the day. So, other than that, you do not see or hear any trucks in that yard. The bobcat doesn't beep either. So, there's, you know, there's no noise.
So, the delivery truck would be the only one that would back up with a safety?
Yeah, the tractor-trailer that comes in once a week. He's the only guy that, and the way it is, he's not even going to have to back up. He's going to just, you know, do the loop and drive right back out.
So, he's going to loop across the gravel?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that way, they can unload the fence right onto the gravel with the bobcat, same bobcat.
I wasn't clear when you said the loop, if he was looping down on Carl Thompson Way.
Oh, God, no.
I wasn't sure what that was.
No, he's looping in, within the...
The gravel area, which is completely fenced.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. But that is different than what you're showing as this K-turn approach for the fire truck apparatus.
All right. I'll double-check that, make sure.
What I see here in the plan is that the turn for the fire truck is it goes all the way in from the building. It actually goes beyond the building and off the parking area.
Yeah.
It K-turns, and then it comes back. It's in the plan.
The last sheet.
What you just verbally described is a different circulation pattern. Can we just see whatever the circulation?
Absolutely. We'll put that loop on the plan.
Right there, top, right there.
Yes.
So, that's what you're showing is the circulation pattern. If it's different, great.
It'll just be one continuous kind of counterclockwise flow.
Yeah.
Yeah, just like that. All right, we'll change. We can fix that, Sean.
As long as we just know how site traffic is circulating.
Yeah.
Next, please.
Yes. Good evening. My name's Bill Manoropoulos, and I live at 473 Groton Road, and that would be directly north of the building that we're talking about, right behind. So, I'd like to thank the company for being much less invasive than the first accepted plan. However, I do have a couple of concerns. You have to keep in mind, I've been there for almost 40 years, and part of the landscape and the woods and the conservation land to my right has always been so quiet and dark. This is hard to accept because it's going to change a little bit out there. So, I understand that, but I have a concern about the noise at 6:00 in the morning with the trucks and the bobcat. So, I'm familiar with bobcats, and waking up to 6:00 in the morning with a bobcat moving fencing, I'm not, that concerns me. I think it's something that we should think about. I don't know if they can push that back a little bit, but that's an early time, 6:00 in the morning. Okay? But I'd like to thank the company for being much less invasive. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please come up, name and address.
Karen Feria, 21 Forest Road. Thank you. Much better plan. Very stupid question, but it's hard to tell from the back of the room. Where is the existing building?
Yeah, and Joe's circling it with his hand. It's...
It's right there.
Kind of tucked into the upper right-hand corner of the property.
Okay. It's just hard to perceive everything from the back. Thanks.
Shelby DeVoe at 33 Forest, so right to the direct left of it. I just had a good question. Is on top of the berm going to be a vinyl fence or a chain link fence, strictly behind our house?
Like vinyl, right?
It's anticipated to be chain link with the privacy slat, six foot tall.
Okay. And then, I'm slightly concerned about the noise, too. We have a seven gold, so I just want to make sure at 6:00 a.m. that we can still sleep a little bit. But, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your information to the members of the audience, we will continue this. We definitely have to have engineering review this, and there'll be continued public comment and discussion about your concerns. Mr. Morsett, do we have an idea of when engineering will get to this?
They've received it, so I'm not sure when.
I mean, is preserving the existing building, I can imagine it'll take much longer.
Drainage is less, but it's different drainage, but it is less.
Traffic is significantly less. And I know that they said that they would review traffic based on the existing information that's available and the reduced scope of this project.
I think it's probable that we could have their comments in time for the next packet.
Great. So, are you free the 18th of August?
Not anymore.
I'll move that we continue P D 2527 Carl Thompson Road to planning board meeting of August 18th, starting at 10:00 a.m. in meeting room 201. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a good night. We'll see you in a couple weeks.
There wasn't any correspondence in the package, but there were minutes. All those that are on the agenda, is it appropriate to review or approve Mr. Morsett?
Absolutely.
Oh, it was... Yeah, sorry. It wasn't, I generalized. I missed that.
So...
I'll move that we approve the planning board meeting minutes of June 2nd, 2015.
Discussion. Do you have anything?
I have one minor point.
Whoop, what do you say?
Second.
Ed, Bob?
One minor point. I just want to discuss with Jeff reporting that the Cloverleaf Lane subdivision had been completed and accepted by town. Probably should have the phrase that town meeting accepted Cloverleaf Lane. It doesn't accept the subdivision.
Hey, guys, can you move it out? We're still having a meeting.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Was it just that town meeting accepted the way?
Yeah, or the way. It accepts the way. It doesn't accept the subdivision. It's just a very minor tweak on how, I think, it captured what you said.
That's a good call. Thank you.
That's it.
Go on.
No one? No one, good, thank you.
Darren?
No.
Motion to second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I say aye. And is there another, a minute? All right.
Motion to...
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.